The city of Campbell is no longer requiring face coverings be worn inside city facilities. However, all are welcome to wear a face covering should that make you feel more comfortable. And should health directives from the county of Santa Clara or the Centers for Disease Control Change, the city will comply. So our call to order the study session meeting of the city of Campbell City Council on Monday, April 25th, 2022. The study session is conducted in person and via telecommunication is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act. The city council meeting is live streamed on channel 26, the city's website and on YouTube. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Here.
Councilwoman Landry?
Here.
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Present.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Here. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we received any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So we'll move to item one fiscal year 2022 to 23 budget study session operating budget and capital improvement plan introduction from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's our honor to be before you as part of our annual process of budget setting that starts, as you see on this slide, with really in February with the mid-year financial updates, trying to understand where we where we are in this fiscal year, moving into a council priority setting, really trying to set city priorities at a very high level with the council at the end of February. As the council knows, we came to you and and the beginning of April with a study session on work plans. Tonight is the second piece of the study sessions where we're studying the operating budget and CIP. I really want to stress this is an iterative process that what you see before you tonight is is not fully baked. But yet we had to develop a budget based on some assumptions in order to give you information in order to start that discussion. So the intent tonight was to to give you a snapshot of where we are based on where we think we've heard those priorities and where we we think the direction of the council was to us. And if we've missed the mark, tonight's a chance to rehear perhaps where we're missing priorities or not stressing in the right areas. And then as a response to that, when we come back to the council on May 17th, we'll incorporate those changes into that budget. So just give you a little bit of a review. And there's a lot of information on this slide, but in a nutshell, that our revenues are increasing over where we were during the pandemic, that we are showing a 5% increase in revenues. We're also showing an increase in expenditures, and we're going to walk you through where those expenditures are in a moment. As the council's aware, during the pandemic, we have used ARPA funding to help supplement that deficit in the budget. You can see last year a deficit of four points, I'm sorry, in 2020, a 4.7. In 2021, a deficit of 1.3. The year-end estimate for this year is still to come in, but we anticipate ARPA usage to fund that deficit as well. And then of 2.1 million. And then for this year, what is in their proposed budget with this, what you have presented before you is usage of about 1.3. So less reliance upon the ARPA. We are seeing revenues are slowly coming back. What we have included in this is is a placeholder for labor expenses. It may or may not be the right number, but we have put a placeholder in that budget based on recent council discussions. And those negotiations are still to play out, but but there is a placeholder for that. And then it does include some strategic filling of remaining vacancies. We're going to talk about that this evening as well. And then probably as important anything is looking at where revenue growth is an economic forecast. This all comes based on assumptions and where we think things are going to go in the past. But we've really taken an effort to try to make this a conservative approach and realistic, really trying to hit the mark and where we think the target's going to be in the coming years. It does not include any new position request that we are going to talk through with you this evening. One, because we are still in a deficit this year and two, want to make sure before we incorporate any new positions that we understand council priorities in those positions. And we're going to give you some hierarchy of how we're making those recommendations this evening. This pie chart's always a little bit helpful, perhaps maybe not as much for the council that understands us, but for the public to understand where our revenue types are coming in are obviously our largest revenue is property tax at 33.9%. Sales taxes, just a little bit behind that and other taxes at 14.1% makes up the bulk of of our tax permits. When I say other taxes, I'm thinking of things like transient occupancy tax, thinking of business license tax and other miscellaneous taxes in that category. And then as we show you, the revenues here is the counterpart to that and the expenditures by type. Again, I think the pie charts helpful for those that are adept at understanding our budgets, just in a nutshell, to see that salaries comprises of our biggest expenditure of the city. As we know, our employees, we are a service agency is 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 the largest sector of our expenditures. Supplies and services is closely behind that and benefits is is a second piece of that that is also tied to the employees and the salaries expenditure. So this is a snapshot of general fund, and I did want to highlight, and I quickly went through that at the beginning, tonight, we're really, for most parts, talking about the general fund. There is other funds in the city, but tonight is really a focus on the general fund. And here we show the city departments and their funds going back to the actuals in 2020 to the proposal. And in the rightmost column, the percent change, and some of those changes are rather large. And I want to just give you some highlights of what those included. And certainly, if there's questions, we can provide more detail. But for instance, in the city manager's office, some of those increases, the larger increases includes new human resource software for recruitment, onboarding and training. There's added expenses of about $200,000 in economic development plan consultants and economic development strategy development. In the city clerk's office, some of the the larger expense increase has to do with elections. Recreation and community services. We have a large expense increase for the contractual services for the theater. I did want to note that even though that contractual service for the theater is going up, that is offset by ticket sales and other theater revenue. There is a large increase in community and recreation services related to the contractual sports camp instructors that operate that program, again, offset by program fees. In finance, a large expense increase for this year, including finance and HR system needs assessment and related services. In community development, a large expenditure accounting for some of that expenditure increases the downtown parking survey. And then under public safety, the recently discussed license plate readers and the annual cost for that is is one of the larger expenses. But certainly, the largest expense under public safety is a contractual increase for Santa Clara County Fire Services of about $454,000. In public works, large increases include funding for the facility's condition assessment that was previously discussed with the council. And another large expense of about $116,000 for anticipated cost increases for the contractual custodial services that was recently discussed for the community center. And then last but not least, under non-departmental, one of the significant increases there is increases in general liability and property insurance of about $314,000. I did want to highlight that what I'm reading from is attachment C in your packet. And those are just a snapshot of some of the department's larger expenses. There's more detail on all those expenses. Any increase over $10,000 is detailed for you in exhibit C. And I think at this point, I'm going to turn it back to our finance director, Will Fentis, to talk us through the long range forecasting.
Um, yes, and hello, 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 council. I am, I will go through our our long range, our long range projections. I am, I think that the thing that I would like to re-estate again is that although we do, we do show a growth in both our costs and our income, we are attempting, we are attempting to show cons- carbon of growth. It's typically about three of a percent per either income or a cost, except we've got additional data that would, that which that would show either a trend or some type of additional data to push it to push that over a 3% increase. You, you, you healthy that again in fiscal years, two, two, fiscal year 2002 and 3, we wish, we show that expenses will will meet, will meet income at about the, at about the about 58 and 59, 59 million in a total. It, it does take into account that we would continue to draw about 2, 2.2, 2.2 million of ARPA funds in F like what, what, what do you do? We also drew about 2, 2.2 million of ARPA funds in F like, F like, anyone. But it is expected to come down to about the 1, 1.3 in F like, F like, 23. And then over a time, based on, again, upon a trends, based upon the what we know about our, our key, our key. Income and taxes and fees are, are, are total, are total, have you revenue growth over time? It's, it's expected to exceed our costs. Now, again, this doesn't take into account a new, a person, new person, new personnel, new personnel request, which will be discussed in detail tonight. But there does appear to be, there does appear to be some room over time to also take on additional costs if the council were to, to agree with that. Um, then turning, turning over to a general fund reserve, reserve accounts. We, we again drew down our hazards due to COVID. They are currently under, what, what is the council a target? But we again expect once income catches up to a cost, what's once our income does exit, go, go, well, once it comes does exceed our costs, that we will again be able to build up the general, the general fund reserve accounts to the point that they meet or exceed the target around a fiscal year 2020, this year 2026 and 2027. The key thing, though, to also take into, the key thing to also take into account is, is that although we, we, we do get a big amount that's coming from ARPA, it, it can't be, it can't be used to build up our, it can't be used to build up our general fund hazard accounts. It can only be spent down. So we're attempting to be careful so that we don't use the ARPA funds in a way that would appear to build up the general fund. So I think that those are the key things to state there, and I will again turn it over to Brian.
Thank you. So kind of just taking a pause and thinking through the last couple of years, there's been, obviously, some budget cutbacks over the last couple of years, and the city had at one point, a hiring freeze, many vacancies in the city that were left and filled in response to the pandemic, and we've been coming out of that slowly in a measured way. And I think what what's important to stress that we're on a staff level, working for a comprehensive strategic plan to fill, not just filling vacancies, but key vacancies and looking at critical positions based on operational needs of the city, in part, as part of an overall succession planning work plan that I'm working on with the council. So what we're showing you here today is, is ideas of things that we've talked about. This isn't the end all of, of solution to all of these, certainly understanding with limited funds, there can be a discussion of backfilling some of the work areas by contract, by temp staff, or simply backfilling the work with existing staff. And that's how we've, we've gotten by. So we've given you some, some ideas of areas that we believe, based on some priorities that we've set, and we've listed these here by priority for you. What are succession planning and knowledge transfer items? What are those that are related to enhancing community outreach channels? What are related to safe city safety and what are related to what we'd call organizational gaps? That's certainly areas that are being backfilled by other areas, the organization. And we've highlighted these for you, but really with those priorities from A through D and where we see obviously A, B and higher priority than priority D. But as I said earlier in this evening's presentation, tonight's an opportunity to check, check and touch base with the council and their priorities. None of these are funded for positions. We've obviously are using ARPA funds to help supplement our deficit of about 1.3 million. Staff is very cognizant that, as the finance director just said, that we don't want to use one-time money to support long-term expenses. And these aren't posed in that sense that, that we do believe that there's capacity in the organization over time to support these with increased revenue growth in the city. But yet we know that if we put these in the budget, either there's going to be a greater deficit or something else is going to have to come out. And so that becomes a discussion of priorities. The other area that's not shown in here with these positions is economic development. As the council knows, we are vetting through that. There is some significant economic development work plans. We have not yet articulated what that position would look like after that study gets done. But that would be something in addition to this that, that is on our minds and we're vetting through. So this is proposed in the, in the context of council understanding where we think there needs to be additional staffing to support either succession planning, community outreach, city safety issues or organizational gaps. And we can go position by position and provide detail. I wasn't planning to do position by position detail in this presentation, but at the appropriate point, if there's questions about any of these positions, we can certainly provide you greater detail on the, the organizational need for those positions and the strategy behind them.
Hold on, Brian, one second.
I just wanted to clarify, this material is not in our packet.
This material is not in the packet and it's not in your proposed budget. This is additional for conversation this evening.
New information for tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, but the economic development position and other things that you've mentioned is already in the budget.
Not any new economic development positions, status quo positions.
There's a budget in there for economic development.
For the consultant, there is a budget in there for economic plan consultant and economic development strategy. There is.
I want to be sure that we're not mixing apples and kumquats.
No, I appreciate that. And that's why I wanted to clarify that. So this, this is for discussion. It's what?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Comment about kumquats.
But, but the idea was to get council feedback. It was, this is a touch point tonight's study session is to understand where council priorities are, where they aren't, to tell you where we think we've heard you, issues that haven't been vetted yet, certainly none of these positions, as was said, are in the budget. So these are all new for, for either discussion or for future discussion. So at, at that point, we're, we do, we are going to transition in the presentation to the capital improvement budget. Like I said, we can circle back on the details for these. At the appropriate time, I do have additional details on all of those positions as, as we want to. I didn't think it would be fruitful to go position by position at this point, but if there's a desire for council to discuss those, we certainly have the detail to do that. So with that, unless you wanted to break for questions on operating, that's what.
Before we get into the main presentation, hold, hold on, if you would. Let's, let's see if there are questions and start with on what's been presented so far, just councilwoman Landry, you have some, start there.
Can you go back one slide? Okay, so this one page was referenced in the front of the memo saying it would be provided tonight, so thank you. Under the POI, PIO, that's in addition to what we have already. That would be a second position.
Yeah, that's in addition to, and, and I can give some more detail on that, but part of that position was served in the role of the deputy manager before. Part of that's enhanced services. Part of that is trying to be more effective in everything we do with communications, both of the public and city events, whether it's the mayor going out and speaking to the chamber recently, or to neighborhood groups or council members speaking, to have a unified voice and have someone working on those public engagements and really trying to come up with you. This, this is in addition. Now, like I said, none of these are taken leave, but understanding that several of these positions can be backfilled by existing staff, whether it's the, the existing city manager, assistant city manager, or other positions, or backfilled with contract or reallocation of existing resources. But what we're trying to do is paint for you the picture of where we see some gaps.
Okay.
And one way in order to address that.
Thank you. I guess I'm highlighting that one because that was part of the assistant deputy city manager before, right?
Yeah, and this, and, and I think the vision here, and, and I can talk about that a little bit more specifically, if, if you want, is really more of an expanded role from that, certainly for press releases. And speaking with the media, that was the intent of the existing deputy. But I think what we're talking about here is a really expanded level of communication and our communication strategy, website, social media, but also all the events that we do have in a uniform way, whether it's state of the city and having someone focused on those communications, or like I said, chamber events or neighborhood association events.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, great, thank you.
Council member Lopez. Just questions of what's been presented so far.
Uh, thank you. Could we go back um, to um, some of the slides? Well, um, slides three and four, I just want to make sure. It's I'm looking for the summary pages, keep going. Hang on for. Uh, let's see. Yes, so that that's one of mine. I. So I'm a little confused. One of the things that we want to spend a lot of time on tonight, I believe, is going to be discussing exactly what council is expecting and. Understanding from ARPA funds. So when I looked at this side. Um, I was trying to understand, under fiscal year twenty twenty one actual, it shows a deficit. Of one point three and your summary slide shows an actual two point two million of ARPA funds used. Why is there a million dollar gap?
I'll um, check into the details of that. Are um, I would expect um, that there were there were. There was a draw from a a different general fund. Account um, to either pay for um, in to pay for in cumbersome. Or um, to a paper of of things that are that are under the C. IP, um, but we did in in indeed, um, we did in indeed. A draw to a two point two on that, two point two, two point two million in a total from ARPA.
I I so you might appreciate it if you would check into this because this doesn't include the CIP. If I reading this is just general fund, so to me those numbers should match.
But there's some.
That another million was used for CIP or something that would be fine. Because I'm going to be asking that kind of bottom line number going forward. So, uh, and we're estimating that twenty twenty two is 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 neutral with using no opera funds or using. I couldn't quite tell.
It's a a two, a two point two million dollars.
For twenty twenty two. So when you look at the summary in your table, the fiscal year twenty twenty two estimate. It's showing it balanced, but that's inclusive. The zero line is inclusive of using two point two million. So I I would just offer that a summary table like this, given where council has asked questions in the past, might be helpful if you could identify. Um, under revenues, two line items. One is for um, where we use reserves and another line for where we used ARPA.
Okay.
Thanks, that would be helpful. Okay, and then the next slide. Next one, next table, keep going. Okay, um, so I appreciate um. Some of the explanations that the city manager offered. What I was having trouble with is the non-departmental line at the, I was having a couple of trouble with a couple of them. And I think I know the answer, but I just don't want to assume uh, for community development director in FY twenty one. Um, actual, it was two point five million and in FY twenty two estimate it's four point four million. What's the difference there?
Um, it it also takes into account um, of things that were. Approved by um, a council. Oh, yes, um, so there's the um, there's the. The the general, the general plan update, um, there's a. A housing element. Expense, um, but. Also, uh, how do you think that's unspent um, um, come the come the come the end of. Uh, June, um, will also, well, so well. If we enter into appeal and uh, contracts, um. Anything that's unspent in the project will also a will also a roll over into. The into the year as well, so that's also something to take into account.
And and what I'm doing, I'm just looking at the numbers and it says, you know, from FY twenty one, we were two point five. From FY twenty twenty two, which was supposed to have been a tight built year, we went to four point four. And um, because we adopted the two point eight and we ended up right now at two point at four point four. And then we're seeing in twenty twenty three, we're going to go to three point five, which is a twenty three point four percent increase. So I don't think it there's enough explanation of what's happening between that. Um, so I'm not questioning what was done. I'm just questioning, making sure that we know why, because the twenty three point four percent. Is based on the twenty eight number. The two point eight number, not the four point four.
That's correct, and that's that that's the important distinction that it was based on what we adopted last year, that percentage increase, what we end up at the end of the year is a much larger number.
So that's why I'm trying to make sure we understand, okay, and then when you go down to the bottom. Um, the last non-departmental one goes, it's it's similar. It goes up and I'm not sure. And then it goes down, so I'm not totally sure I understand what's really happening there, so that was just that. And then if we go back to the staff report. I would, um. There was a lot of material to go through, and as I said to you earlier, it was some of it was redundant ways of looking at the same information. It did seem to me that there were some inconsistencies in how information was presented from one year to the next. Um, so um, I can discuss those with with um, another time, but um. I I would just, I would say want to start with, I think staff, council was has been very clear. That the ARPA funds were not to be used to balance the budget. I think we were very clear on that, and um, so I'm a little surprised to see that here. And then I have some nitpicking comments that we can talk about what's not in the budget, but let me look and see if I can go to. Fund page, let's see, it's report page nine, packet page nine. The last two lines of the first breakdown under revenues. Um, again, um, it seems like it would want to have. Uh, if you're saying operational transfers in, does that include the CARE funds and the ARPA funds and reserves?
It, um, so the, it it does, it does include ARPA. Of funds, um, it also um, for for. Anything that would be an. Overhead expense, um, it's 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 also a taken into account, so if. There are overhead expenses in in non G. In 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 non general fund of funds, um, then they also um, make a a payment. Um, into the into the into the general fund. Um, in regards to. Uh, in regards to the. The. Our funds, um, I believe that those all went straight into. Uh, the 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 general, the the general fund upfront.
So and this one, this column is on revenues and it has a total um, down at the bottom. Uh, but the the line there again is operational transfers in and out, so again, I if if it's possible, it would be helpful to understand. What the CARE funds were, the ARPA funds were, what reserve funds were. Because again, I'm looking forward to see that we do or don't use and how soon we can put the um. Reserve funds back, you're projecting for twenty twenty seven, and I wanted to understand whether we can do it sooner and also I'm I'm looking for a question. Related to the purse funding, so.
Yeah, so um, what, how do we um, do on the a full budget? The full budget um. Intro, intro, introduction, um, if it it will, it will also include. Um, a much greater. Like a detail, um, that I think will help to address, um, that will help to address those types of. A qual happens, um, we were attempting to not. Put in full PTL because it also, it also could change as well. Um, but when we do the the budget intro, um, you will get a complete. A a book, um, that will also con- contain um, the complete.
So my questions are valid for at least that point, but you can see why I'm asking, because I I I'm just looking and I'm only highlighting the ones that stick out to me. So at the expenditures department under PD, it went from um, nineteen point eight to twenty one point five. Back down to nineteen point eight, and again, then it's starting to go back up at a nine percent rate, and I just wanted to say, I'm assuming. That the twenty one uh, for PD went because of extra services required during the pandemic. I just would like to understand why. I'm still trying to understand where we are, where we spent money, so when we're making projections of increases. I mean, we're talking about, you know, increases of fifteen, twenty three, thirty eight, twenty three, you know, nine, the increases. Are substantive. And I'm trying to figure out. That I appreciate everything that's in the report that talks about what's changing, but I don't think we have quite enough information in the report. So when you go over to the next table, which is the significant supplies and services increases, I'm not sure. They cover enough of what's in some of the subsequent information. Yeah, I mean, like so here, this is where it has a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for economic development plan consultant. And fifty thousand for short term, we actually put in three hundred thousand in the budget. So I don't quite know where that, how that jives and where. That fits with the question about extra people. I could, I couldn't make that make sense. I also thought um, under the city managers, we should have the IT and HR information. Um, which isn't in that cluster, but I think it probably should be. Um, I did have the question on marketing for the theater. I wanted to make sure. I'm assuming that that means that that's marketing the theater for everything that the management group doesn't do. Just a yes or no is fine. Okay, I um, I didn't, this one, I don't know, it says a plus three hundred and fifty six thousand for contractual theater management. What are they already getting? Is this a doubling of what they're already getting? What what's what's that? Sorry.
But are we getting beyond what's been presented already?
Well, hasn't, isn't this because we're going into the CIP next, right? So this is all pre-CIP. Am I missing something? Okay.
Okay, I just don't want to get into what what's coming up next. I'm a little confused. I'm not following where you're pulling the numbers from. I I don't know where these numbers are coming from.
I'm on page eleven of the report.
Attachment C.
So I I didn't get into the report yet with with my questions, I just.
Right, so so let's limit if we can to what's been, I think we wanted to get what's been presented and just, because I think that's why you passed, right? And then and then go.
Okay, so those are all the slides that Will did present and and that is the list that the city manager presented. I thought, yeah, I'm fine, I'll I'll let it go, we can come back, but I was trying to stick to.
No, let's come, let's, I think, because I think we, let's come back and then I I just, I see.
If you could bring the slide, Will, up on with the proposed positions, please. So could you uh, discuss a little bit um, what the mental health coordinator? Position would do.
Good evening. Uh, the question was on the mental health coordinator. So over the last um, couple of years, we've taken a very holistic approach to wellness for um, the police department. We presented the Cortico app, which which you approved through the ARPA funding, which we're very appreciative of. But as we move forward, we're looking at ways to better serve our staff, which in turn will better serve our community. And one of the ideas that was brought forward. Was having a mental health counselor on staff that would be able to provide support to um, our staff members, their families. And this position would really be able to take overall control over our wellness program. Right now, it's. Being managed by a handful of different people who have a lot of other things on their plates, but um. Not just overseeing the wellness, but I think most importantly. Having somebody who has um, the degree and the certi- certification as a counselor. Will give them the ability to to be a confidential resource, and there's a lot of empirical data and studies that have shown. That by having that type of resource available to employees. Will um, improve employee morale, will decrease um. Injuries, on the job injuries, and really translate into an increased customer service for our community. So that was really the the thought process going into this request.
So it's more of a for a staff resource rather than a community resource?
Correct, it is a staff resource, but really we're looking at it as if we're taking care of our staff members that. Really results in in much better service to our community.
Okay, thank you, and then I I have um. You can sit down. I um, have a couple of questions on the chart that's in the in the packet on the. Current vacancies, so I guess, should I hold off until we come back to the report?
Yeah, if we can, and then and then um, let me ask a few, because I was going to limit to what they had presented and we'll come back and do a little deeper.
Okay.
So a few questions, well. For the ARPA funds, there are some timeline deadlines. We have, it says, two and a half years to obligate, four and a half years to spend. Obligate at what level? What what how how specific do we have to be in that period to what those funds are going to be spent on?
Um, so to to to. Obligate the uh, the the. To obligate the uh, uh, funds, um, they would either be. A spent a one, but also if you were to um, enter into. If you were to enter into some uh, a type of like, uh, some type of a contractual. A a contract um, to us, to bend them down um. By the end of a a December of two uh, of two uh, two thousand and twenty six. Um, that it it also would be okay, um, but it would a need, it would need to be a. You would need to enter into that, uh, enter into the like. A contract of by the end of a a December of two two thousand and. Two thousand and twenty four, um. And then also, if you've like, if you've like got a um. A a um, a thing in the CIP um, that you expect to a spend or. A build, um, that's been a council approved. Uh, we'll hit the in intention that you'll 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 pay for the CIP item. Through how through the ARPA. Our funds. Uh, based upon what I read in the uh, detail. Uh, a date, the detail of of how you're able to spend ARPA funds. I believe it also would be okay as well. It it's. Either they need to be a spent um, entering into some type of. Like, 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 like. Or also, if it's a approved a CIP um, that you know. You know for sure that it will be a a spent by X. you know for sure that it will be a, a, a spent by X, like, date.
Okay, I got it. So so obligate only comes into a case where it's going to be spent after December thirty one fourteen, which uh, two thousand twenty four, which is, which, and the options in that are through contractor, through CIP commitment. Okay, um, Brian and or or Will, in the, in the fiscal year proposed um, expenses total or by city department, do those expenses include um, expected or estimated increases in labor costs, just, just based on history of how labor costs change every year?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so there's some estimate in there of a placeholder. Okay. In this, in by the departments, the, the largest expenses were um, theater and sports camp. And are they, are they that large because essentially during COVID, they went to zero? I mean, is that? I mean, if it's a simple one, just not or something, but it, they're, they're very large, but, but especially in rec, relative is very different than everywhere else.
That's correct. So the sports camp contractor payments were modified at the mid-year budget as well. So there's offsetting revenue. So it, there's a percentage break. The theater, yes, so there are um, programs and services that were not being offered. Some of this is reimbursable labor through the contract. Um, but we were not marketing the building. We were not marketing season shows. So all of those expenditures are coming back as we plan for full operating as pre-COVID.
Okay, we also had, for the most part, no offsetting revenue. So these have offset. So these are expenses that that were dropped because there was no theater, but offset by revenue and in the past, there was no revenue.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, just a couple others. Um, and the other big expense on that list, Brian, was the general liability insurance and all that. I think it was mo- mentioned as premiums and claims. Is that just an estimate? I mean, it's, it's very high increase for a premium. So are we just estimating?
No, no, um, so, uh, we are, um, uh, we are a part of a, a, we are part of a, a risk, a, a, a risk pool. Um, and a, a based on, based upon um, the uh, uh, based upon the uh, uh, quotes um, that they are able to get uh, right now in the um, ma- 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 market. Um, we, we do um, expect, I believe it's about a fifth, a fifteen to an eighteen uh, percent uh, hang crease um, to our, uh, pre, 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 I mean, um, they, they do, um, they do think um, that that could come, that could come down a, a, a bit. Um, but we won't know for sure, for sure um, until about the end of uh, ma- end of uh, ma- hi. Um, over the past uh, uh, two years, I'm just, I'm due to um, this, yeah, just due to a COVID, due to this thing of um, the um, ma- 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 the state of the, 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 the market. Um, the, for that, for that um, particular uh, cost, it's jumped about just thirty, about thirty percent of per year. Um, but it does seem to be coming down a bit more now.
Okay, is that, is that, so is that the A-bag pool?
Yeah.
Okay, it, it, just a couple of things real fast, a high level on the positions. Brian, when you mentioned PIO, are you combining a PIO and a social media position into one? Essentially, from what you, the way you described it? But, but doing both. Okay, to have comments on that later. And then last question, what's the, um, I just forget, what is the expected um, date to get the results of the economic development study that's been approved?
Don't know that I have a deliverable date yet, um, but I can follow up with you and give you that. I, I imagine it's after the time.
It's going to be after the budget though.
Sure.
That was, okay. And la- last thing, so we, we cut off Norit when he was up here. Was that just ju- what that was to jump into the CIP?
Yes.
Really? So that's my fault. I I apologize for that because I thought we were going to get a little more in-depth here, and I think Councilor Lopez did too. So why don't we do another pass through if there's questions beyond, because I, I thought the questions were a higher level. And in fairness, I don't know if, if I cut off, cut you off from other questions. So let's start again, and we'll, we'll go down again and just see if there are other questions beyond, beyond, you know, anything prior to going into the CIP.
So, so including the packet information, okay, non-CIP related, because that'll be presented.
Okay, let someone else go because now I gotta go back.
Fair enough. So Councilor Lopez, because we skipped you, now come back to.
Okay, um, Brian, for uh, not just this slide, but just more broadly to, or, you know, or, or for the finance director, but to, to what extent, um, especially for things like succession planning, um, are, are you taking into account market uh, conditions, that the fact um, that the salary is maybe a moving target to some extent, be because they're, they're going up. But also the fact that we, we've heard recently about particular fields that are more impacted than others and would be difficult. And so that may push out the hiring timeframe beyond what, what we'd want ideally. So is that a part of your, the, the thinking here and, and the strategy? Uh, again, broadly, not, not just what's, what's on this slide, but in general.
Yeah, I think generally, broadly speaking, you, you, you are correct, um, all of those things. I, I think that the estimates, when you do cost estimates, is pretty accurate based on market right now, where we think these positions are, based on what other cities. We, we do some quick comps uh, for these positions. So I think the salaries we're giving you are, are, are accurate. Um, but I do think different positions are going to be different uh, level speeds of recruitment and ability to actually recruit that. And that is part of the thinking, um, that some of those may be more difficult.
It, it, it may be the case that um, depending on when the hiring process begins, that the, the, these numbers may also go up or otherwise look different.
Yeah, these are annual costs. So um, this is assuming a full year of funding for each of the positions and what we're showing you is the annual cost. So if there's time that takes to hire, there would be cost savings in there as well. These numbers would go down based on we fine tune these.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more worried about, does the cost go up ten percent because uh, the, of, of tight market conditions?
I think it's a pretty good estimate based on where we are today. Now, in a month, it's going to change, but relatively speaking, we're pretty good with the numbers.
Right, I, 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 I don't doubt that. I, I guess I'm just thinking more uh, uh, a, a little bit longer term, but.
But more likely, what will happen is those numbers may go down if it's not a fully, if we, if we decide to recruit one of those positions and we end up not hiring them till September, October, you, you have three months of cost savings.
Yeah, I understand. Um, and then uh, Director of Personnel, you can probably just give a thumbs up or a thumbs down. But the uh, community center Wi-Fi that the council has discussed, that's, that's being included as part of the citywide Wi-Fi improvements. Is that right? Oh. Oh, Cecil. Cecil Lawson, IT manager, that um, the continuation of the Wi-Fi is only for the community center. There is another project that includes other areas, but just the, the next uh, proposal would be just for the extension of the community center Wi-Fi. So that, that is, or that's not included in the numbers that, that we received tonight? Fortunately. That is, to my knowledge, that is not included.
That, that is included. You are, you are seeing that included in the budget, the community center Wi-Fi.
I've seen, see that broken out for. The community center, yes, but not beyond that. Okay.
Community centers in there, the overall city is not.
Right, okay. Um.
That's right.
Yeah.
The city, this community center is detailed quite a lot.
I, I just saw five hundred thousand for overall citywide IT improvements. Is that not correct? Five hundred thousand?
If I may.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a separate item, I think, a year out, and it's for upgrading the citywide um, equipment, the I, uh, IT budget within the city functions, not the city, city.
I see. I, I was trying to understand that. So thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and, and then um, TOT, um, not, not that we might necessarily have perfect advanced knowledge, but are there, uh, the report alludes, uh, you know, this number may go down if we see hotel closures due to continued uh, hardship in, in that industry. Do we have rumblings that that may be a possibility? Um, or is that more of a hypothetical in the report?
At the current point, I don't. Um, I am, I am, I, I do con- continue, I do continue to see a TOT, a work, work, uh, re- upper a bit. Um, it's, it's, it's certainly, it's certainly, it's certainly not a pre, uh, COVID. Um, but that, uh, by the end of uh, uh, June, um, we ex- ex- expect a TOT to rec- recover about the fifty, uh, fifty percent of the, uh, peak. Um, and the, and then to continue to recover over a, a time, over the, over the next uh, 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 two years.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Councilor Givens, you wanna?
Go for it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm on page nine. Expenditures by department. Um, didn't we have a conversation saying that we, there shouldn't be three hundred thousand in the city council budget as expenditures? What, what is that? What are we expending three hundred plus thousand on, on the city council?
Well, and some, it's a payroll, a one, um, and, and then, and then also, um, what we pay, I believe, to A-bag and a, a different, um, a different associate, different associations. Um, but it's a typically cons- uh, con- consistent, um, from year, uh, uh, year. Um, so there's been no real big, uh, there's been no real big uh, 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 adjustments to um, the budget for, uh, for, for the budget for uh.
So A-bag is in this number?
I wouldn't need to go through all the details of the council's budget.
Wasn't there, wasn't there some discussion that we had about, there was three hundred thousand for the city council budget that we, they were talking about, it was party for the, was that in the reserve? Liz is shaking her head no. Because we had this conversation about the, whether the party for the ca- the commissioners.
Yes, I, I think there was a question of what fund, what monies came out of. That was the discussion.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Councilor Givens?
Okay, um, so I am trying to stay at a high level and try and ask questions that I think are conducive. So I'll just go back to table one A and the bottom line, which has um, um, vacancy savings and it's showing zero all the way across. So it's another one of those things that I think would be helpful for us to understand what vacancy savings we did have that contributed to. And in this case, um, it's showing um, uh, negative one point four versus a zeroing out. Again, I'm just trying to understand numbers. And then um, going to one C, um, I think it's a little bit of a, of a apples and kumquats. Um, or gee, gee whiz, whatever. Um, it's significant supply and services increases. And um, so I think there's a mixture here of what I think are actually carryovers, not adds. And I think that's really important for us to understand. So for example, the one fifty and the fifty is the economic development. That's been in the budget since last year, so it would be a full carryover, not an addition. Right, because we approved an economic development budget for three hundred thousand last year. So however you want to accommodate, account for that, and it was for three hundred, not two hundred, so I don't quite know what's cooking there. And as I said, I think IT and HR should be in here, but we can go over that in a second. The marketing we talked about, um, I would like to know what the current contractual theater management and event fee is that's being increased by three hundred and fifty six thousand. And it may be just be, uh, but we paid him full amount last year, I thought.
It's the management fee along with all of the temporary labor that works inside of the building. So there's the ongoing operations costs as well as reimbursable pass-through costs. So we are planning a season um, of full rentals again, and all of that temporary cost gets billed to the client permitting the theater, and it's a pass-through to venue tech.
So let me ask.
And we didn't do any of it last year.
So, so this is where this table is confusing, because the table is saying um, increases. And traditionally, increases have been something up and over and above the norm, and all this is doing is bringing us back.
Agreed. It's, it, in my department specifically, I can attest that these are bringing us back to pre-pandemic numbers and that these increases correlate to an almost eight hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue as well. So it's completely offset.
Right, that I, forgive me, I don't mind that at all.
No, yeah.
I'm just trying to understand what this table is trying to tell us. And I really think it, it is, it is not telling us what the simplistic title is, which is to say significant supplies and services increasing um, oh, and requests over ten thousand dollars. In the budget itself, you've built all of these costs in because they're the normal operating costs and they're bringing us back to normal operation. So what I'm looking for here, when, when I first read this, was to understand what was an actual unique, ne- unique special increase um, kind of thing. So I have a lot of questions, but I, I'll just say that I think this table needs to be reorganized to under, better explain for that. There's one here under public safety, which is a twenty thousand dollar increase in the mobile connectivity cost. I'm going to guess that's an actual increase. Okay, so that's an example of what I think is actually happening. The SWAT replacement vest and cert- equipment for thirty five thousand, I'm guessing, is not totally a net add of thirty five thousand. It may be, but I, I just can't tell. So this whole table needs a little help for me to understand what it's really um, trying to say and do. Um, non-departmental is fifty two thousand eight hundred increase for utility costs. That does not surprise me because utility rates have gone up. Um, it would be nice to know what our time of use policy is so that we can operate our buildings to minimize the peak cost times of four PM to nine PM. And maybe we need to be more aggressive with that to prevent that cost from being the fifty two million, uh, fifty two million, fifty two thousand. Uh, okay, and then um, and the liability is what the liability is. I have some other things about measure O, but I'll hold those off. So I'm now going down to, to the column. Attachment one D. And I think you'll find that most of my comments are pretty consistent from what I've just said. So from my perspective, what I'm looking for is not to use ARPA funds to backfill the general funds at this point. I think council can make that decision and might well do so, but I think that's not in the direction. I do think we aren't talking yet about reserves.
Can you ask que- question, questions? And here's why. We're going to, we're going to do the CIP, ask questions, and we're going to open it up for a whole discussion.
Okay, I'm looking at the.
Okay.
Table. I'm trying to look at the table and ask the question.
Okay, sure enough.
So there's a table one D under reserves. And um, I'm just saying, I need to understand how we're planning to, to, all right, so I, I, so the plan right now is not to put the uh, to use PERS to backfill or pay off any more PERS at this time. Is that correct?
Um, it's, it's, it's still to be determined. Um, yes.
Okay, all right. So I, I would look forward to a discussion then about the PERS and the um, reserves um, and how we want to show it in here. Okay, the rest of my questions are CIP.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have more questions? Thank you.
Thank you. So I had a question on the uh, recreation and community services. Trips and special events in adult services, and you don't need to get up, Natasha. I, I asked the question earlier because it seemed, it seemed odd to me that we were increasing it by forty four thousand dollars and why we, why we were. And the answer I got back was that it's off, offset by, by revenue. So I think it's really important that when there's an expenditure increase, that it, that we note in the, in the report, that it, there's, it's offset by revenues because obviously the, the. net expenditure is not going to be forty four thousand dollars. So just just to comment, I mean, to follow up on my question that I had earlier. And then on page on the vacancy list. There I I have questions about a couple of the public works positions that in the status it states that it's potential reclassification, potential reclassification. And then in recreation and community services, there's three recreation program coordinator positions. And it's, to my knowledge, we only have one budgeted recreation program coordinator in the budget. And I don't understand what what those are and how what at what point we're going to get information in which to to make a decision on those and what the little footnote on three and four means. So council approved at the midyear to allow us to do the recruitment for the adult center coordinator position, and so that recruitment is underway. We recently had the recreation services manager position go live and the recruitment was completed and we had an internal candidate who was selected for that position. So a recreation supervisor was promoted to recreation manager. And in planning for last year with our organization organization chart, we were really looking for ways to have really positive succession planning within our department that showed the progression through a career path for our employees. And we lack the whole coordinator level within our department. So it doesn't provide good forward momentum for people coming in at the entry level at the specialist to kind of move up within our organization. So with the promotion of the supervisor to the manager, we'd like to refill that position at a lower classification as a coordinator. And so we are going to be moving forward with that because it is a cost savings to us. And then the last part of that is we have a fitness specialist, recreation specialist who recently retired. And so through this budget process, one of the one of the things we would like to do is instead of rehiring back at that level, because that's not a level that we need to fill out, is more of the coordinator level, is to fill that position at a coordinator level after July one, if approved through this budget process. The financial fiscal impact to this is a pretty much net zero because of the cost savings of the reduction of the supervisor. And then the increase to specialists is kind of a wash for our department. So we are not increasing F T Es. We're just trying to better align our organizational chart for our department. So I I can understand that explanation, but to me, in the report, it should have listed the position that is actually going to be reclassified. So it should have been the recreation manager and a notation that potential reclassification, because that the council hasn't had any discussion of that and is not aware of that. And so it's very misleading and confusing to to see that information in in a budget in a in a budget report.
So.
Yeah. Okay, and I think you have that in the new personnel request, for example, principal planner moving up and senior planner moving down, which nets it out. So let me in that list, the principal planner is the only reclassification. All other ones are brand new. So that's a good way we can see it's a twelve thousand dollar. I think it's yeah, twelve thousand dollar expense, really. And I think I understand your question, which is what's important there for us is the net, not the classification.
Yes, yes. Some of these also may have some other not directly related considerations we're doing. Maybe there's some position deletes and we don't detail that in particular with the emergency service coordinator. But the others are all new additions.
I think the questions went to if something is a net increase or decrease in position reclassification or net increase or decrease because there's an offset revenue, it should be it should be apparent when.
Yeah. And that's why I mentioned that the emergency service coordinator, there is some offset there and we don't detail that. So that's another we could probably, but the others are all new.
Okay, so before we start the C I P, let me, because this is a let me break for public comment and open a public hearing. Is there, Madam Claire, is there anybody that wants to speak on this item?
No, I don't have any more.
We'll close the public comment. We'll come back. We'll do the C I P. We'll ask questions again. We'll open up another public comment and then we'll have discussion on on anything at all.
Good evening, council. I'll be presenting to you briefly the five year C I P plan that we have. As you are aware, the the C I P plan is a five year period plan that begins with fiscal year twenty three and goes towards fiscal year twenty seven. Our C I P totals nearly ninety million dollars, and that's through seventy four projects in total. Up that amount, four point one million dollars comes from new capital requests that you have not seen in in previous C I Ps. And the additional eighty six million dollars is for existing capital projects, which includes carryovers. For fiscal year twenty three specifically, we're projecting to invest about forty four million dollars, most of which comes from Mezrel or from the police and library building expenditures. And and last but not least, within this slide, we provided a summary of changes to C I P when you compare them to the current year C I P, which includes any changing to funding or changes to funding period. So so, for example, the Hamilton Avenue Highway Southbound off ramp in last year's C I P. Or let me take that back in this current year C I P, it's projected to have funding of about one point five million dollars. However, we've increased that to three million dollars due to an increase in measure B funding. And for the second item, we had the police facility F F N E, which has a decreased cost estimate to two million dollars. The remaining one point nine million dollars will be going towards the project. And the total three point nine is funded by the state's Cal O E S grant that the city received. Item number three is in regards to the police mobile data computer replacement, which decreasing decreased by sixteen thousand dollars due to updated financing quotes. The measure our design and construction, the majority of the funding for that project was moved to fiscal year twenty three for anticipated construction contracts that are to be awarded later this year. The parking guide system was deferred from fiscal year twenty three to fiscal year twenty four. The service pistol replacement was moved forward to fiscal year twenty three due to the useful life and the aging of current service pistols. And last but not least, we have the Sansom Moss Camden White Oaks Improvement project that is deferred from fiscal year twenty six to fiscal year twenty seven. And at that point, I can pass it on to the city manager for the next slide.
Slide is a summary of kind of where we're going. I don't know if we want to take comments first on the C I P, but this slide simply tells you what our next budget study sessions are from here. May seventeenth would be a formal introduction. We, as I said, plan to take your feedback tonight, incorporate that into the document for May seventeenth. And then June twenty first is our budget adoption hearing.
Okay, are there is there any more to present before we go to questions? Okay, so let's go to let's go to questions on the C I P and we'll bring it back for discussion, but let's go to questions. This time, councilwoman Givens to us.
Marie, could you just bring back your last slide? Okay, so I think there's information about the four million in the material we can talk about later. But in here, the Hamilton Ave increasing to three million, I might have misunderstood what you said. Is that actually an increase of of? What's the so again, coming back to the question, what's the net increase to from our previous C I P to our current recommended C I P?
Good afternoon. That should be an increase of about one point four million or so, because we had previously, it might be one point five, I could be off by a hundred, but we had some measure B money from the earlier round of measure B and some development money from the Bed Bath and Beyond Development, about five hundred thousand. When we re-scope the project and got together with V T A, we are under the under the new assumption that that's about a three million dollar project. And so we there was a call for projects through V T A. So in order for us to make the project whole, so to speak, we wanted to bring that number up to three million. We applied for that, which was was going to be another one point five or so from measure B. We needed to increase the city contribution from five hundred to six hundred. And that's how the the project has grown from one point five to three million. It's largely with measure B funding, but two point four million or so.
So I I read the description and I just the number was so we there's actually different numbers. The project in price increased to three million. The funding increased such that the city's portion came from five hundred thousand to six hundred.
Correct.
I mean, so so the the number we're looking at is a hundred thousand dollars.
Of city funding. Correct.
Thank you. Please F F N E, I don't understand this one. It says the decreased cost estimate to two million. So even though we've been holding and and saying that all the F F N E in the building needed to be three million, you're now saying it's only two million?
The total F F N E for the police building does need to be, does need to be three million dollars.
Okay, help me.
What? This is a great question. So in working with our design team, L P A, there's a recommendation that some of the F F N E elements be included in the construction contract so that they can be installed. So we're still going to purchase and it's there's going to be three million dollars used for F F N E. We're going to transfer transfer some of that money into the construction contract so it can be installed with construction and then some will be purchased after the fact.
As long as the grant allows it, usually there's some fussiness about that. Basically, if I may offer, F F N E typically means if you had a model of the building, you turned it upside down. Everything that fell out was F F N E. Okay, so you're redefining what would fall out.
Just to some extent, correct.
All right, it's just an odd way of of doing this. So what you're saying is this is literally a zero.
It's a net zero from that from the F F N E.
Okay, so I I think we need to help clarify that we're not trying to decrease or increase. And when you look at the tables down below in the report, it was confusing.
Understood.
Police mobile data, let's see. I I think I think you're off the hook for the next ones. If I do have a question for the chief, it says the police mobile data computer replacement. And did I get that mixed up with what was just presented as being a twenty thousand dollar increase? They're two different systems. There was a slide before which showed.
That cost was a decrease of just over sixteen.
This one is a decrease of sixteen, but there was another one with an increase of twenty on the oops, wait a minute, I can show you where it is. It was in that my favorite sheet that I said was too confusing. Yeah, it's table one C or appendix one C. And it has in there an increase, twenty thousand dollar increase in mobile connectivity costs. Could you just explain the difference between the twenty thousand dollar increase and the mobile connectivity cost and the decrease shown here?
Yeah, so those are two different items. The one you're seeing here in C I P is our mobile data computers and and we've utilized some other funding and we were able to finance it. So the purchase of those computers has decreased by sixteen thousand dollars. The connectivity is think of it, the the cellphone data plans for all of the computers. Even if we didn't get this, all of the cellphone connectivity with our cell phones and the in car M D Cs and that connectivity is increasing.
But it's it's the same mobile system. It's related to the phones and the computers and all of that.
Yes and no, the the C I P is just the laptops. The connectivity includes cell phones. It includes cradle points. It includes M D Cs. It 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 goes beyond just the computers themselves.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. I was and I do have one other one. Why are we seller and I I with all due difference, we've made some some very thoughtful decisions about providing the right equipment for P D. Why are we accelerating the purchase of pistols when we've agreed that they didn't need to be there until twenty twenty four? Why are we saying we now have to have them in twenty twenty three?
Well, I I don't remember the conversation of.
Last year's C I P was comfortable. We all agreed twenty twenty four. So why?
The the conversation this year is our current service pistols are needing to be repaired at a much quicker rate than previously expected. The discussion that we had internally was we can continue to put it off until twenty twenty four. The issue is we're going to be throwing tens of thousand dollars at keeping our current pistols functioning and in serviceable condition for an extended year. So the thought process is instead of throwing that money at something that we know needs to be replaced, that it would be better to expedite it by one year and not waste that ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars in buying replacements when we could just expedite the process.
My comment, if I may make a comment, my comment is without having a backup data to say that this has been a problem and this is what we're trending in costs. I don't object to moving it forward, but to me, it appears arbitrary. And it's an easy way to say, well, you've got our funds, so why not use our funds for it? It's it's just a matter of really being sure why we want to spend the money now. It's not that I question it. It's just we don't have a lot of backup. To me, if we want to accelerate something like this, then it makes sense to me that this is where we would say our funding might be appropriate. So I'm just that's why I'm being so picky about what I'm asking for there. Okay, and then, thank you. And then on my other C I P questions, I'll try and be brief about them. Okay. So on the Ainsley House roof and foundation assessment, we've acknowledged the city manager acknowledged that there's a roof leak now and it's been identified as being a problem. And under the C I P plan that's being proposed, it's not even going to be evaluated until late twenty twenty three, twenty four. So if you've got a roof leak and other problems, it's going to be two years out to get a fix. That's what's in the description.
Yes, thank you. You are correct about that. We are doing an initial assessment with the with the structural engineering firm that probably will not give us the level of detail that we will need to proceed with improvements and or repairs or any redesign. So it's not like we're waiting, but this may be a two stage process to first identify what the where the areas of need are. And then for us to obtain additional detail about what improvements might be made, but it is the same two areas that you mentioned.
Yeah, so I I would question that with the preliminary information that you're getting, you'll probably be able to identify enough of the problem to go and not go through a two stage process going forward to have the building being subject to damage over a period of years. So I would request my understanding of that be discussed with council. Thank you. Yeah, there's the I T replacement phase two that Councilmember Lopez was asking about. I probably have other questions, but those, let me see if those are the those are them. There's a replacement of the boiler at the pool. And my question is, is there any consideration for replacing it with modern equipment, not just replacing it with a gas fired boiler? Given that the building code in the state's going to all electric starting in January and the and Councilmember Lopez can give us an update on what Bachman just decided in terms of their regulations.
I'm I didn't quite catch the beginning. I think you were asking about the boiler at the pool and consideration to going all electric. I don't have an answer for you. I think we did discuss that and there was a there was an issue with having enough electrical capacity.
That's why I'm bringing it up because it might need another C I P project. And it's. And that's exactly why I'm asking, uh, because.
It's certainly something that, that we can do with some additional research on. We probably didn't take that down to the level of analysis that maybe you're looking for, but it, it would be that sort of discussion. What would be the cost increase to the existing utility service? To be able to accommodate that.
The building code is going all electric and you want, you don't want to get stuck with very high gas prices. So that's why I was asking that one. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Lopez, any questions?
Um, just, just a, um, follow-up, um, to one of the questions that was just discussed for, for the Ainsley House repairs. What, and, and, um, we, we may not have this on hand right now, but if we weren't to do this two-stage process, what would that look like? What might be the cost differential?
I could not give you a good answer on that. I, I think what we need to do is to complete this first level of assessment and then see what recommendations come out of that. So I'd be hesitant to give up any funding beyond that at this point. Um, although as council member, council member Gibbons points out, that's, there's going to be work required beyond that in either case. So it's either going to be the first level of assessment with additional detail, followed by some improvement project, or if we get the sufficient level of detail from the initial assessment, we can go right to that. Uh, I would recommend not removing that at this point, just for that purpose, because it's possible that we will not need all of those resources, but, um, that was our plan going forward. We could certainly capture any unspent balance and apply that toward an improvement project. We'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Thank, thanks for that, um, clarification. Um, I, I don't have further questions. I accidentally asked my, my question about the, uh, IT improvements earlier. So thank you for clearing that up for me.
Councilman Landry.
Are we going completely through the CIP or just this one?
Questions about CIP and then we'll.
Total all the projects.
And then we'll bring it back for discussion after questions.
Okay. So you asked, might you ask the question about the roof and the foundation access? When we do the work, what I'm concerned is you're going to shut down the Ainsley House to do some work, but we don't have the garden renovation. There was the lawn and the paving issue. And if we're going to shut the Ainsley House down, to me it makes sense to do the garden at the same time. So you don't have to shut things down later. So that was one. There's the Prune Yard Creek Trail Extension. Is that a project? I thought we just got the money.
Yes and yes. It's a project and we do get the money for it. You will recall that, uh, is money that we got from the Prune Yard Development when they came through for improvements. And we're applying, um, applying, hopefully applying those funds toward a creek trail extension along the western boundary of the prune yard along highway 17 to take us to Campbell Avenue. Um, that's a, almost exclusively on Caltrans property, I, as I think you know. So we would have to do some preliminary work with Caltrans to enter into an agreement and do a design. In the event that we cannot reach an agreement with Caltrans in a certain period of time, I can't recall if it's 24 or 36 months, but something in that range. We have the ability to apply that funding toward other bike and pet improvements in the area. So we're trying to now to take that revenue and to turn that into a tangible project.
And won't the whole project be more than the 250, though?
Maybe not.
Original estimate was in the millions, I thought.
It was the initial, uh, discussions with Caltrans is that they were insistent upon a separation of a, of a trail and a maintenance road and there's not enough of a, of a flat area out there, so to speak, to have two separate facilities, which would have required pretty extensive retaining walls along the length of this. Uh, they have softened their positions.
Okay.
Shall we say, and it could be, it could be a shared type facility. So it opened as a creek trail, except for times that Caltrains, Caltrans would need to perform maintenance.
I missed the part of they're getting better at letting us do what we want, right? Okay. And then, um, okay, got to sort by my cat comments here. Uh, okay. Oh, this is so hard. I, my thing isn't annotated correctly. All right. Keep going here. Um, page, page 79 of the packet is unfunded project lists and the civic center drive improvements, including the reconfiguration of Harrison and Civic Center intersection is put down as a medium priority, but I thought we were going to do some of this work with the measure O project. I mean, why do any improvements and then come back and close the intersection and do the work later?
Well, I don't believe that we will have any, uh, sufficient resources from measure O to reconfigure that intersection. That, the reconfiguration of that intersection, you may recall was originally estimated at a, at a $1 million project. Um, and it essentially, for those of you who don't know, it would essentially square off the intersection where Harrison would meet Civic Center Drive more at like a 90-degree angle. And it would require not only the reconfiguration through reconstruction of the street curb and gutter, but a, a new stoplight and signal as well. That's probably going to be, uh, you know, in the neighborhood of that earlier estimate. The project that we brought to council earlier on this fiscal year was the application to apply for OBAG II funding, uh, which would allow us to begin the design of the improvements that we had, um, included in our grant proposal along Civic Center Drive. So it was predominantly, uh, things along Civic Center Drive to make it more bike and pedestrian friendly. The largest component of that is the, is to come up with the design of the reconfiguration of that intersection along with other improvements at first, second, and third along the way. Not, and I think even, uh, I think even Central and Orchard City is, is, would be included as well. Um, so at this point, we are in the process of, uh, getting ready, preparing an RFP to issue to, uh, to bring somebody on for those design services, which again would be paid for predominantly with OBAG II funding with the, with the city contribution match. Uh, that may be a viable project for an upcoming grant application, namely the OBAG III application cycle. But at this point, we had not identified that as being a component of the measure O projects.
Because, okay, so I heard what you said, and it calls it a medium priority. To me, it seems like if we're going to close down and do library work and then come back later and close down again and do an intersection. I'm just kind of looking at how we group things together. It seemed like it would be a higher priority than medium.
We could certainly re, uh, um, identify that as a high priority as opposed to medium, but we if we're going to go after grant funding, it's difficult for us to control the timing of that. I certainly agree with you that it might be a lower impact to do those improvements while the library is down, but I, I'm not sure that that timeline is in the cards for us for that project.
Don't go anywhere. Um, under turf conversion, you have medium priority. I would think with the drought and what we're doing, and you know how turf is my favorite product, right?
I didn't think it was.
That was a joke. Um, it just seems like turf conversion should be a high priority with the drought and what we're trying, I mean, how much money will we save?
Well, that's the thing. It, it actually is a much higher priority and we're doing individual projects kind of on a one at a time basis. So I, I would agree with you. That's probably something else that we could re-identify as a high priority. We'll change the priority.
We're going to get rid of all our lawns.
So everything's going to be high priority.
Yes, I know. Okay. Um, well, no, this one's going off the list. Santa Mas Aquino Creek Trail. I thought we turned that project down.
You did turn it down for moving it forward. I was, and we had it, it's now been on the unfunded list for at least two fiscal years, I would say. So we were leaving it on the unfunded list unless council. I mean, it's come before you on the unfunded list, I think for fiscal year 21 and 22. And it remained on the unfunded list. Certainly if council would like us to revisit that, we'd be happy to.
Well, I would add it to the low, low priority because move those other ones up and move this one down. Please. Okay. Well, I'll have to agree to that. Okay. I already mentioned about the Ainsley House garden patio and trying to, if you're going to close the building down, try to do the work for the garden.
Yes.
Um, okay. Brian asked me about city hall reservation. City Hall renovation is listed as a high priority at $20 million, but it's going to be a long time till we have $20 million. So why is that? Why is it high?
Well, it's high because uh, once, once we complete the other measure O improvements, right? It's certainly going to call attention to some of the shortcomings of this building, right? So I know we've had conversations about ADA access and public meeting rooms and public restroom facilities. Um, it certainly needs to be on the list and it certainly needs to be something that we tried, need to try to find a way to address. But you're probably right. You know, I think relative to some of the other projects that were uh, considering funding or considering applying, there's not a lot of hope for this building unless the city finds a way to self-fund or there's a a great grant program for, for city facilities. So you could make the case that maybe it should be a medium priority instead of a high priority. But that doesn't take away from the fact that, that it may, it may, the shortcomings of this building will be a bigger issue for the public and for our users. Once the two, once the two, one is reopened and one is constructed. So uh, we could certainly be open to what the appropriate priority should be.
Okay. And, um, Liz and I've talked about this physical plant category of budgeting ahead, saving money. Would that be something that that could be what we'd call put physical plant?
Yes, we've had several conversations between finance and public works about whether we should establish a, um, internal service fund for our facilities. We, I mean, we have that already for fleet and for IT. Some other organizations have that for their building maintenance needs as well. And essentially what it is, is a sinking fund to help you recognize that all of our, not just city hall, but all of our buildings will need some level of renovation and some level of asset preservation over the long haul. We were attempting to take the first step at that this year. You, you will see in there that we do have a building, uh, assessment that we're proposing on doing. So that would help us identify our needs. The next step of that would be helping to establish some sort of a financial mechanism that where we could start compiling money, uh, almost like off based on the square footage or how, what, what, however we you know, we have a variety of options for how we could do that, but it would operate something like what you see for IT and our, and our fleet fund. So that then those funds are, are identified and they're designated strictly for building improvements. I will say that, that upon establishing that, we, we would not have, it would take a long time to be able to address this building, but it might help us for things like you'll also see on the unfunded list that we've got, we've got roofing issues at the community center, the service center in this building. Um, it's usually used more for those sorts of improvements to help extend the useful life. It may, it may or may not be, uh, something that we can rely on to do a complete renovation of a city hall, but it could be a component of the funding.
Okay. I would say for city hall renovation, um, maybe break it out into smaller one or two projects like ADA, like all the counters, things that aren't accessible. Um, so that instead of wow, $20 million that you have some subset of that, that might be helpful. And, um, the redevelopment of the gravel lot into the employee lot, uh, that is going to be something done with measure O. Also at the same time, you have that as a high priority there. So.
That is the goal.
Okay. So I don't want to get into more detail then. Let me just go back up my list here real quick. Somehow I'm missing some here. It's not letting me bookmark or something's weird with my bookmarks here. Okay. Well, I reserve the right to come back if I find it.
Vice Mayor? Questions?
I have no questions.
Okay. Todd, just a couple. So it's, yeah. Didn't let you get too far. Two, two, two related ones. Um, the Hamilton Avenue 17 southbound. So the 30.01, just, just want to understand it. Is that 2.4 plus 600 or is it 3.01 plus 600? It's a total cost 3 million or is it, is that the measure B?
The total cost is 3 million.
3 million.
We've got 2.4 from measure O.
Plus 600.
From local funding of that 600, 500 of that came through development. 100,000, I believe is shown in the CIPR.
Okay. And refresh my memory. Is that, is that secured from measure B? Is that locked in?
It is.
Okay. Uh, and then just the, um, other part of that SR 17 Santa Mas Camden White Oak deferred to 27, two, two things from, from when?
We had shown that in the, I hate to call it this, but that's almost like a perennial 50-year project until you can ensure that you have all the funding. So early on in measure B, we were fortunate enough to get two allocations kind of before the interchange category became highly competitive.
Right.
That's how we got the first million for Hamilton. We also got a million for the Santa Mas, White Oaks, Camden interchange. That's probably a larger project than that because it will likely, uh, result in a reconfiguration of the connection between the northbound off-ramp, the White Oaks intersection, taking you way, all the way up to Camden. There'll be some coordination, not only with Caltrans, but with the county, because the county operates the signal at Camden and White Oaks there. So uh, we were not in position to apply for additional funding for that one as well, because we couldn't really identify any other matching funds. So our ballpark figure early on is that's going to be at least a 1.5 million dollar project, perhaps larger. We have a million from VTA measure B. We have only 70,000 that we've collected, um, through developer contributions from, uh, relatively close project. We're, we're going to need to bring some more money, whether it be city money, grant money for that. They fully fund that project before we can move it forward.
But the million for that is, is, is held. These, I kind of was on the VTA policy action committee when, when we went through that list of projects and we talked about a lot and those were two, we insisted beyond there. But I remember also they were front-loading a lot of projects that were not going specifically to city projects. They were front-loading a lot of transportation projects. Is that how they earmarked money that could be out in 26, 27? Because it, it wasn't all available upfront, put it that way.
The, the interchange money is really all available upfront.
What is?
So we could conceivably move forward with that Hamilton project almo- almost anytime. It's just that we're trying to put together that and, and and balance our priorities on other projects. The million dollars for the, uh, for the Camden Santa Mas interchangement is also there as well. It's just that we don't have enough to make that a viable project. Our allocation is there. It's already been shown in the VTA CIP. It's, it's there.
And we don't run the risk of losing the, um, 17 Santa Mas money by waiting.
I don't think so. I mean, I think if there ever came a point where the city elected not to do that project or not to move it forward, I think that might put us at risk, but as long as we're showing that as a budgeted project
Okay.
in our CIP, we, we should be in good shape.
Okay. And lastly, um, the Hamilton southbound is, is, is to increase the width of the off-ramp and all that. If we want to go further at some point, especially with, for example, a fries development or something, and then we've talked about how we're going to get from, how do you get from Salmar to, to light rail at Bascom? And it, to me, it probably requires some kind of pedestrian bridge. That would have to be funded separately from city, from grants and or from developer fees for, for those local projects that that have the nexus to say now we need to be able to, to walk across and, and get there.
Most likely, yes. There's a lot of good grant opportunities for bike and pet improvements, and we have some grant cycles coming that are going to be coming up. We're really not in position to apply yet for that because we really don't have a well-defined project, right, Rob? Um, but, uh, those typically are going to require some level of a local match, right? So I, I think kind of the, the assumption that we have to make on those is, and there could be exceptions to this, is for a local project, we better plan on 11 to 12% as a local match walking in the door. And in some cases, if you want to make your grant application more competitive, we should, we should be prepared to go as high as 20%.
But local matches could include money that we're getting from the project itself.
Exactly right.
It, it could be externally funded, but lo- local be external to the grant.
That is correct.
Okay. I think that was, uh, that was all I had.
Traffic calming?
Yes.
Uh, I don't see a carryover and I always see 50 in that one of our meetings, we talked about putting a hundred thousand dollars in to traffic calming. Cause you said it was about 20 per. Cause you said it was about twenty per project.
Yes.
And so we went to one hundred thousand.
I think we're carrying, I think between the carryover and the fifty, I, I'll have.
Doesn't show carryover.
It doesn't show carryovers.
No, it just is a dash.
So I believe that between the two projects, we should be close to a hundred. I will double check that.
If I may, that's one of the reasons I'm saying it's shown so many places. It's hard to tell. There is a place where it's showing fifty thousand from two thousand nineteen. Carryover plus fifty thousand this year, but your comment about a hundred thousand in the discussions, correct?
Okay, so page thirty two doesn't match wherever else Liz is saying it's shown up, because there is a carryover fifty and we're adding fifty.
Yes, but that's two, I mean, just so you're aware, and you probably got this sense by going through the reams of charts. That, but that will be two, from a CIP project perspective, that will be two separate projects. There's the twenty nineteen project of fifty. And there will be a twenty twenty-three project of fifty. It won't be a single hundred thousand dollar project. But the resources are the same. There'll be a hundred thousand toward traffic calming.
Okay. It's still only listed as one project.
It is because you, you, what you're probably, I don't, I, not even, I don't want to try to get into the details. You're probably looking at the new projects because we don't show the existing or the carryover projects. On the same table or the same sheet. You'd have to go find that separately, but, but it is in there.
Okay, this is what Liz was talking about, the confusing part of redundant information, but not being the same. Cause I'm looking at carryover numbers for Harriet Sidewalk Measure O and then did not have that one there. So just. We have a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think that's it on questions. So uh, well, we're a public hearing round clerk. Do we have any people from the public wishing to speak?
No, no.
Okay, then we'll bring, then we'll bring it back for discussion on all items. Um, let's see, we have. About seventy minutes, so everybody take five to ten minutes, I guess, at the most, because I want to give staff twenty minutes at the end to, to be able to. Repeat back to us, is this direction we have? And just one thing, um, I, I would mention to staff. That there's going to be questions of increasing priorities, lowering priorities, adding, taking away. We will make sure that there's a clear majority that want that. I mean, if, if not, then it's a valid opinion, but the majority is saying status quo. So um. Please come back to us with that. If it's unclear that there's a majority, let's ask and make sure we, we clarify it. So um, let's start. Going back and forth. Councilwoman Landry, you want to start?
All right, I will try and be uh, ten minutes or less.
Yeah, please. And then, and then we'll have like, we'll have at least twenty minutes for staff, which I think is good.
I promise I try. Uh, Ainsley House, I'm gonna go um, and use the table on um, attachment one E. Capital improvement plans is the easiest way to go through it. So I've given you.
Page in the packet?
It is page. Did you get, you get the page number? Let me see if I can find it. Page number, packet page seventeen is what mine says. Okay. Um, so first and foremost, um, property tax revenue. I'd um, ask staff to uh, distribute to council a memo that staff prepared for me discussing. How uh, affordable housing impacts our tax base. I didn't realize there was quite an impact of understanding that. And to make sure that going forward, there's a way, you did it for me a month or two ago. Um, and we don't get property tax for affordable projects the same way we get that for regular projects. And we're in the middle of a housing element and we're doing fifteen hundred or more affordable units. So I want to make sure that the projection for property tax going forward has some type of an algorithm factor in there. Um, to relate to that over the next eight years, since it's a seven-year outlook kind of thing. Um, I'll go over the people positions at the end if I may. Um, so. Um, going on table one E, Ainsley House, oops, you got me. You know where I, I are on that. Um, water tower lighting, I'm flexible on city and IT. I'm okay with. You gave, I gave you my comment on the electric boiler. Anything the city does should seriously consider going to electric, including some. Um, other projects because it's, the cost of gas is just going to go up and up and up. And it will be cost-effective very quickly to start transitioning to all-electric. You have the comments on highway seventeen, the police data and all of that. Okay. Okay. The Prun Yard Creek Trail, um, doesn't make a lot of sense to me right now, um, because. It, we're in the middle of the housing element. The housing element has some substantive proposed changes to the entire Prun Yard. And the neighborhood of Bascom and Campbell Ave. So to come up with a project that has a different. Um, user, audience, potential funding, um, I think would be um, missing, missing. Uh, what, what it could be. I would request that there be some conversation between public works and uh, community development. I would also mention that um, ABAG has just issued and you can help me with a correct title. They've issued, issued new guidelines for um, pedestrian transportation. Um, and bicycles that are going to have grants associated with them. And that's going to start happening quite quickly. I don't know if Todd knows that or not, but there's some new ABAG grants potential coming out with some new guidelines. And um, so I'm saying to hold off on the Prun Yard. I think that, that should be recognizing new funding potential. And also the development that's being proposed as part of the housing element. There's substantive change happening in that area. So I would not recommend that for twenty twenty-three. Um, okay. I don't know, let's see. Um. The JDM restrooms on the Bud Side is for twenty twenty-four. I would encourage doing that earlier. Um, we have seen the utilization of the uh, all-inclusive park being substantive. And I think that that um, should be accelerated. To me, that's a good example of where ARPA funds would contribute to the community as a whole. Um, let's see. The. It's a project council chamber cable cast equipment upgrade. We desperately need better microphones in here. Among other things, so please be sure that that's in that scope. Um, the measure O, the measure O project, I think has a glitch in it that the city manager is looking to uh, address. Which is the solar PV and the battery storage, storage grant application. I don't believe is properly scoped within the project. And um, I'm not sure how that's going to play out, but it should be tracked to be properly um, allocated. Um. I don't know where it is in my list here. Councilwoman Landry mentioned the um, trail. What's the name of the trail? Santa Mas, Santa Mas Trail. Uh, I do think council, what has been clear in the past. The city of San Jose owns two-thirds, if not three-quarters of the land that the project would be built on. Um, there's absolutely no reason for the city to go forward with that project. I would support absolutely just letting it go. All right. Uh, the um, automated garage signage, I think that that should be accelerated to um, a high priority in twenty twenty-three. Because um, we're putting in parklets. We are going to be demoing the parking lot of city hall. We're going to have, not only city staff having places to park. We're going to have all the construction crews with the library and the PD. Um, I think it's urgent that we respect the, the needs of the neighborhood and not have massive impact of uh, contractors. And city employees. The more effective we can make our parking garage structure, the better. It is funded. Um, so um, to me, that should be a very high priority. Um, the Gilman Dillon Light um, should be coordinated with the housing element and community development department. Because the development of that area is substantively changing the assumptions that the signal may be based on. Um, I think Harrison is worth considering ARPA, ARPA funds for because. You're going to be digging up that whole corner and intersection and redoing parking and driveways. It's one of those, uh, as someone else said, you spend the money now or you respend it later. So I would consider that one being worth looking at. Um. Harrison and, you know, Civic Center. Um, I support the Ainsley Garden, um, because the Ainsley House is going to be down during part of the construction. So it would time with getting the correct construction work and the roof work and the leakage work and the foundation work all done. While the building's going to be down anyway. And um, the garden in the back eliminating the grass is an important consideration. And also in the long run, it will provide more revenue opportunities by having a solid surface, not a um. Uh, grass surface. Um, I do think that we're missing a, a unfunded capital project that's been discussed here. Which is the Capitol, uh, sorry, City Hall residual. Um, I'm thinking of it as the spaces that are being vacated by PD um, in the lower portion of this section. But also city hall is getting some conference rooms and it's not clear on the new portion where, where those are going to be funded and fitted up. Um, I support that we're doing an assessment report. So I support um. As Councilwoman Landry said, a fund for facilities that is identified. Because you're doing a report, what are you going to do with the report if you don't have someplace to carry it forward? However, that works out. Um, so let's see. The gravel lot um, is funded by definition in the measure O project. Um, solar panels are funded by uh, description in, in the uh, documents for measure O. Um, let's see. There's a bunch of comments about ADA and access ramps. Um, there's too many of them to figure out which one is which and why. I just looks like they're all spread out over a long period of time. Um, I constantly get comments about how come I can't have a, a curb cut in my, uh, when I'm taking my baby carriage and my kids. To the parks and things. So anything we can do to, to work on accelerating that. And again, that to me is a good ARPA funding. That's a broad community basis. So I'm saying ARPA funds should be used for community support. I also um, I think it covers in here, although we didn't quite cover it, is uh, the purse funding. Given the market and changing and the purse funding, I think staff um, would need to come back with a recommendation, I hope. I think we should pay down our reserves on, on purse to get our purse long-term obligation down as quickly as we can. It's just an unnecessary um, cost burden to carry it. So the more we can do to reduce that, I would do it. I would look at um, what projects, um, CIP specific projects that we can use for ARPA. That will then reduce the burden on the general uh, fund that ARPA funds then can legitimately backfill. I know there's a lot of projects that ARPA can't directly fund, but um, I think if we focus on um. Accelerating community benefit for ARPA, that then doesn't take out of the general fund.
Can you finish up on major ones? Just about ten minutes, fine, that's fine.
So the only one um, I wanted to go over was the list of positions. If you could put that slide back up. Yes, your slides, Brian May, could you put your slideshow up, please? Your slide of positions, please?
Brian, you're.
Yeah, that.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, so um, I appreciate the principal planner and the senior planner transition here. I would like to have a better understanding about the organization of the department as a whole. I'm very supportive of the workload that the group has and how it's going to be managed. But I would like to see the whole thing before I can recommend exactly what's being asked here. Um, public information officer, um, to me, that was clearly part of the deputy city manager role, so I'm not supportive of that. Emergency services coordinator wasn't really explained. Um, the mental health counselor, I appreciate PD, but. In fairness, we have, and the staff report speaks to it, we've been looking to have um, more mental health services for this. Uh, staff, uh, the whole city a- as a whole. And um, we at mid-year budget. Um, stepped up and did what PD requested. So I'm not in favor of um, adding to that at this point. Um, I can't justify two additional police officers without more information about how the whole department is, is structured. Um, there's something in there about money and then something else that talks about. Um, and again, I can't tell if it's new or additive. It was talking about the fire arson funding and some other things. We need, I need to understand how each department is organized and how they're utilizing their staff. And purchasing agent is, I, I don't support at this point. Um, because we don't know enough about what the new program is.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Sure, um, I'm, I'm gonna almost um. Well, I'll, I'll start with just some, some broad feedback. Um, I, I think, given the confusion, it would have certainly been helpful for me to. Kind of keep the structure that we saw with the uh, priorities setting session. Um, where there is a little bit more of a narrative component to the, to each of the departments. And so, for example, for uh, recreation. Um, uh, understanding that, that narrative would, would have been really helpful. Um, ju- just feedback for next time. And also feedback as, as the point two, as the budget is being prepared. Um, I'd love to have a better understanding of the particular uh, grants and, and just to have a, e- even a one-line definition. Um, of, of what um, each of those are, just to have greater context. Um. I'll, I'll start with the personnel now, since we're on this slide. Uh, I'm, I'm largely um. Okay with, with the, the general uh, strategic thinking behind this. Um, I'm not going to go through line by line and say yea or nay at this point, because I, I think it would necessitate further uh, information and discussion. So um, similarly, I'd like to have a better understanding of the um, thinking behind this and, and, and broad strokes. Um, it looks fine, but I don't have enough information to um, to, to be able to, to say at this point. But. For example, I'd be interested in, in exploring the, the PIO. Though, one, one thing that, that I do feel strongly about, and I'd, I'd love to. Way the, the temperature of the council on this um, uh, would be adding to this a position to coordinate grants. And, and having some kind of requirement so that it, it has to pay for itself, which I, I think. Um, with sustained focus, it, it could easily do, but it, it either um, goes away or we guarantee that, that, that it's paying for itself. Um, we, we heard throughout tonight that just how many um, uh, different things, projects, major projects. Might be dependent on grant opportunities and, and the different complexities behind them. I'm also thinking in particular because. Um, with the discussions that we're having around housing, um, if you look at the, the projects that sees like, like Mount of Yeta putting forward. Um, it, it's not just one grant that they're applying for to have a successful project. It's, it's nine or ten. And they have complex and sometimes contradictory reporting requirements. So I think as we hone in on our strategies, that's just one example. I, I think almost any other department in the city could come up with similar ones. Um, it'd be great to have some focus that. Um, my suggestion would be in the city manager's office, have it pay for itself. And we, we punch above our, our weight in terms of what we're able to get in terms of grant funding, but, but I think just to get to the next level. We require a little bit more strategic focus. And, and again, I think it will more than pay for itself. Um, but, but also support other departments um, with, with what, what's required for that. Um, so, so that would be my, my strong recommendation um, for, for these personal requests. Um, one, one question is if we do end up going with a mental health counselor. Um, could that be something, understanding the unique needs for PD, but could that be something that is also available as an option to other staff? Don't need to sell that, that tonight, but just, just raise that as a potential. Um, one, one point that I'll make um, and uh, updated since the last time we, we talked about this at the party session is on traffic calming. So I appreciate the discussion and clarification very much. Um, I'll, I'll say that at that discussion, I mentioned AB forty-three. Um, passed by, by Friedman, signed a law by, by Newsom, which gives cities more flexibility for traffic calming. So we actually have a, a new. Um, uh, powers to do that if we want to pass the ordinance. And we're seeing cities um, now um, a- actually in, in March. Um, Los Angeles passed their own ordinance, looking at this, San Francisco's looking at it. Um, much larger cities, but the, the, the point being that um, there's starting to be. Uh, a framework for what that would look like to implement this legislation, to do traffic calming in a way where before we're very much limited. Um, by uh, by factors outside of our control. Um, now I think we can have a much more strategic approach that serves the needs of the community. So. Um, I just urge just to continue to, to look at that, um, and to look at what other cities are doing, learn from that. Um, on the, on the water tower update request, I'm, I'm not completely sold on, on this one yet. Both, I, I appreciate the thinking behind and that the need to update our facilities. Um, I would need further. I would need further vetting of that particular project before deciding whether I would support it. And in particular, the, the addition of, of new lights at the top layer. And I'd also have concerns about safety, about wildlife, which we may be able to address. I, I just need further discussion of that. Otherwise, I, I would, I, I would rank that as a lower priority that, than what, what is suggested in, in the report. I, I, I am personally supportive of at, at least looking at the electric heaters for, for the pool. I'd love to just get to that additional layer of more information, more context to, to make an informed decision. I don't think we should foreclose that, that, that option. If, if there's some more digging that we can do to find out whether it would make sense. So I, I just like that additional information and at this point to make, make more informed decision. And also reiterate the point that I made at the party session that I, I think pedestrian improvements, I'm, I'm glad we're starting to, to think about it. I'd love to see more of a, a focused, a, a approach to what a, a project would, would look like. Understanding that that's not going to be something in next year or two. But I, I really think that for some of the, the changes that we're looking at in the housing element process. Some level pedestrian improvement is going to be absolutely necessary for, for Hamilton and potentially other sites. Like Winchester as well. So just making sure that, that we have more of a, a, a medium-term focus on that. And, and I'm open to suggestions that have been made about paying down our purse obligations and, and would be interested in having more information on, on that presented. That I think is, is all of my, my comments, but thank you to staff. I look forward to, you know, commenting on a lot of this is, would like more information, so I look forward to continuing those discussions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Landry?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to start with traffic calming. Based on our previous conversations, my understanding we're reevaluating the whole program anyways. That that was part of the because right now it's very strict on what the require, what the neighborhood can request and the speed and everything. And so by you bringing up the legislation that changed, my understanding was we were reevaluating it anyways.
May I ask for clarification from Councilmember Lopez? I don't think that what he's talking about for the legislation is, the legislation is simply allowing to slow down traffic. You can, instead of being thirty-five or forty-five miles an hour, you can actually take it down to twenty-five miles an hour. It's not quite the same.
Well, it still goes to traffic calming. So I'm just, the point I was trying to make is, we already had a conversation that the whole program was going to have a, a bit of a reevaluation. So adding in this new legislation to me is part of the reevaluation. Regarding the POI, PIO. I find it interesting, the dollar amount, when that came out of what was our deputy city manager. It seems like a lot of money for something that we already have a, a higher level position. Why it wasn't carried over, that's not clear to me. The mental health counselor, when I talked to the chief, I asked him, why can't we do this for all our staff and not just the police department? I do think the police department does need it. But I, I think as a whole, as the whole city, mental health awareness, mental health wellness has come up in several places and I'd like to see a holistic approach to that. And healthy workers make better workers and make us better as a city. I agree with what the other council people said about needing more information, like, you know, the two police officers, why do we need them? What is, what is the rationale behind that? And then one of our priorities is sustainability. And so when we look at gas heaters versus electric heaters, when we look at lawn, whether we take lawn out or leave lawn in. I'm looking at the new two projects and the amount of landscaping that's in them is astronomical and total waste of water. So how do we put sustainability into, you know, basically all of our priorities into each one of these topics? And the gas heaters, you know, we're getting to where we're not going to have gas at all, just like the pistols. Do we want to pay for maintenance now, but then replace them in a year? So to me, it's the same thing with the water heater and the pool heater. You know, we bite the bullet and spend ninety now, but in two years we replace it all to electric. That doesn't make sense to me. So keeping sustainability in mind, that's why I brought up things like the lawn. Replacement may not seem like a large dollar total, but it goes to our category of sustainability. I agree with you on the Santa Moss Trail, that to me, it's almost, what, sixty percent in San Jose? The bridge was what, nine feet to the bottom of the bridge with fifteen feet in the air, the neighbors came unglued. I don't see how that is really should be coming forward as a Campbell project. So I go back to my other comments I made about various projects. The Prune Yard Creek Trail Extension, I would agree with Liz that with the housing element, if that building on the corner at Camden and Campbell and the portal goes now to housing versus what was office. Then we need to be looking at that trail extension. Maybe that part doesn't need to be in the Caltrans right away. I think at one point they had a sidewalk there. So that's something, now what's going on here? Okay, so I think I mentioned all my other pro, I had mentioned moving things up from high or low priority. High, medium or low, and Paul, you made the comment of, do we all agree to that? So I don't know if that's something we talk about. I think those were the big ones that I had, the priority. The intersection at Harrison Civic Center, you know, thinking of these projects holistically, you shut something down. You do everything that's needed when you shut down, you don't come back six months later and shut it down again. It's like paving the street and then trenching the utility later. We want these to kind of work together and then from the community perspective, they're like, what do you mean? They're cutting, shutting that down again. Why, why didn't they fix it the first time, kind of thing? So that's kind of was my ranking in the priority list. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bybee.
Thank you. I just generally have some high-level comments about the whole, the budget development itself. I, I agree with what's, most of what's presented. I, the one thing I, I want to stress is I don't agree that we should be using ARPA money to, to balance our budget. I don't think that was the direction of the council and I, I don't think it's fiscal, fiscally feasible to add positions to the extent that are being recommended. And being able to fund those long-term without additional revenue sources and, you know, looking into the future. That said, I, on the expenditure side, I really would encourage that we continue to keep a conservative approach to expenditures, that we limit expenditures to the bare necessities, that we don't go overboard. I, I feel like we're just coming out of the pandemic. I do believe we're headed for a recession. And I do believe that we should be more proactive rather than reactive to an influx of money from, that came from the federal government to balance our budget. As far as the positions. My first priority is to, I'm committed to fill the vacancies that we have that have been in existence since the pandemic hit. And if that means that we need to look at reclassifying positions that, within the department. I'm, I would support that, but I, we do have a process, we, we are amending the classification salary plan. There is a process for reclassifications and the council should have more information in which to, to base a decision on that. So I would strongly encourage staff to come back with appropriate justification for existing positions that are being reclassed. As far as new positions. I, I think it's premature to be making decisions on additional positions when first we don't have a succession plan in, in place. We haven't had a chance to look at that. It doesn't make sense to me to reorganize if the council has, has not been informed as to what the succession plan is and what the city manager's vision is for that. There's no justification tonight for that, so I can't make a decision on any of the positions. I think that they should address the council priorities that we identified a couple meetings ago. Again, we shouldn't be relying on ARPA funds to to fund those position, again, because we have to look long-term and be able to have a revenue source that can, that can support those, those positions. I think that's basically my overview on that. And then as far as the CIP, I I support the, the projects in year one as presented. As far as the parking garage lighting, I, I don't support moving that up. I really think that the parking study should be in advance of the parking lighting system. I, I think it's important to identify the impacts of, of the downtown parking, of the city hall parking, of the parklets, parklets and, and the loss of parking before we implement a parking lighting system. And I would also support the holding off on the Prune Yard Creek Extension project until we have a better understanding of what's going to happen at the Prune Yard.
Thank you. And let's see, so I'm general, I'm, I'm supportive of what you have in the, in the current year, just some comments is going to jump around a little bit. Based on, you know, when other people comment on it. So first of all, I recognize that, that we have a lot of assumptions in this, in this, in the revenue. We have assumptions in the, in the expenses. I appreciate that you had the guess it's something on labor, but when it comes back, certainly I'm open to changes in the revenue projections if there's an assumption change. And also if we have a better idea, especially of, of labor expense, of changing those expenses, I would expect that those change. And then when it comes back to, I think has been said earlier for all, especially reclassifications, we should have, we should have a net cost for these jobs. And we should have a net cost for any expenses that are going up that are offset by revenue. So, so what, what's interesting to us, just as it, just as we're looking for changes to what we had before. I think the net, without the net, it's hard to, to follow some of this. With regard to repairs or upgrades, when we're talking gas and electric, I, I leave it to, to staff to do that analysis. I don't think we should just assume that if we do something now, we have to pull it out in two years. I don't think that's what the law say. That being said, staff should do a cost benefit analysis. It makes sense to do it upfront. We should do it upfront, but let's not, not assume that that's the case. I have a little bit different take on the Prune Yard and the Santa Moss Aquino Trail. I hesitant to remove anything for this reason. As much as we talk about open space, historically since Sojanovich Park, everything we've done to improve open space is either improvement like JDM. It's an improvement like Campbell Park and it's a repurposing like the community center playground. So as much as we want to buy land, I don't know, we'll ever have money to buy land even given the opportunity. So any chance we have to enhance trail access or add trails, I think is a good thing. With the Santa Moss Aquino one, it kept getting pushed out for funding. One thing I agree with, whatever the percentage of San Jose is, they have to own that piece of it. And at the time, I think there were discussions with, with Chappie Jones on that. Now, all this is going to change, right, with, with the personnel here and with personnel in San Jose and who's in District One. But I think that if there's agreement in District One that they want to do that, and San Jose is paying their fair share of whatever that is. And I've heard sixty percent, but I'm not sure, then I don't think there's anything wrong with that and we shouldn't look at it as, as a Campbell project. We look at it as, as a joint project, no differently than when, when we, when we operated on, on Lee Avenue. And worked with San Jose to do pork chops and, and the lane changes and so on, on, on Lee. So I understand there are people that are against the project, but the reality is we have a group that doesn't want it, but we've also brought in here Campbell PD and we've brought in San Jose PD and we've brought in Public Works. We've brought in San Jose Parks and everybody agreed that the concerns were really not that valid. So I think it should be looked at. I wouldn't, I wouldn't write it off. For the council upgrades, I don't think, I don't know if anybody mentioned this, keeping in mind that we do, we, we do need to long-term upgrade all the cameras in here as well because we're on this hybrid model. And we'd be off the hybrid model if we had individual cameras that could focus on people and would make it easier. This is the model it's going to be, I assume forever, right? It, it enables people to dial it remotely or enables people to go on YouTube. It's not going to change. It's probably the positive of having gone out and come back. We should look at that and, and kudos to us because we're back since, I think, November. And there are cities now still staying out and saying they can't come back. And I don't personally understand that, but we're showing it can be done. And it's somewhat challenging to do it and See Soul does a great job and thank you, but I think we could do it better with, with upgraded equipment. ADA, I agree. Somebody said there's a lot of projects there. I asked staff to start prioritizing what needs to be done in, in what order we can do it. With regards to some of the positions, won't go through all of them. To me, the PIO, that is part of the ACM job. I mean, that was the purpose, one of the purposes of upgrading it. That being said, I would take that money or some portion of that money. We need better, I'll, I'll call it. And no, no offense, non-PD social media, I mean, just P, social media beyond PD and social media beyond the current platforms. So there's two pieces of it and I think that's going to cost money for an expert. But that expert doesn't have to be the PIO. I, I view a PIO as a high-level person and I think that's what we hired. I, I would like to get as soon as possible and the economic development report back. We need to know when that's going to be because that's going to impact what we do in the budget. Two other comments for, for PD, I can support two more positions if I understand that we have at least two open, if we have the ability to, to, to fill those. One of the things, when, when I came on board, almost, almost eight years ago, we were consistently understaffed because people left. People were on disability, people retired and it's hard to get it. We understand the one-year process to get somebody through the academy. Now it's even harder to get anybody to want to start that process. So if, if we can actually staff that, I don't mind if we get ahead of the curve because that's what we did in two thousand, really fifteen and sixteen, we did get ahead of the curve. And, and the, the problem was you could predict it is we had so many people here that were fifteen to twenty years, that five years later we're, we're, we're recycling and, and starting over again. I'm supportive of that. If it's realistic that we can fill those positions and if we wind up one or two ahead of the curve, it evens itself out, it seems over time because there's never a full complement active at any one time. And lastly, I'll just comment on the the traffic calming. I, I don't personally remember discussing revising the program. I, I just, I just don't. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't, I don't remember it. I, I do remember increasing the budget. One of the things I want to be sure about, I think we said it then, is I don't view this if it's a hundred thousand as as twenty thousand per, per district. It, it goes against everything we talked about where we don't have parks per district. We don't, we, we, we don't operate like San Jose. So I support a hundred percent going more in the traffic program. I thought it was a good program as is. I wanted to cover it more and frankly, if it all winds up in District Three, because that's what it needs, or District Four, I'm okay with that. It should go, the money should go where it needs to go. And if we have projects that are valid and it exceeds a hundred thousand and staff can do it, then we raise the budget. I think it's a good, it's a good goal and it works. And, and that's, that's whether they be, you know, speed bumps on, or, or speed humps, I guess they're called originally. People tell me it slowed down all the traffic going between Campbell and Lee, which is great, but it could be anything like that I'm supportive of. So that's
For clarification, I never said by district.
Okay, I thought I heard somebody say like twenty thousand per.
No, I said, when I asked Todd how much an average project costs, he said an average was twenty.
Maybe I missed it.
And that was where we said not five, one per district, we just said five.
I, I misunderstood.
Just for clarification.
But I'm supportive of that, that amount in there. I'm supportive of more if, if you, if we can justify it and we have staff resources to do it, that's great. So I'll leave it, I think, at that, but in general, I thank you for this. It's very thorough. Lots covered. Yeah, let, let's, and we so let's, let's, I'll tell you what, let's, because we actually finished a little early. Let's shoot through everybody. I'll start with Councilmember Lopez of just a minute or two of final comment and then we'll go to staff. If you would, come back to us with what, you know, what are you not sure that we just gave you direction on?
Uh, one brief comment, I, I do support keeping on for now the Santa Moss Trail that the, the mayor mentioned. I actually wrote that down as a note to follow up to, to get more educated on the history of that, that project.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I actually have a conflict on the Santa Moss Trail.
I'm sorry.
Discussion of it, I should be not in the room.
Thank you for
If, if the council's going to be discussing that a little bit further, I should leave, so.
I, I have, if, if we, let me, let me, city attorney, if we leave it at what's been said, which is there's some support to, to review it later in greater detail. Kim, is that okay to leave it at that level or?
Or at that level anyways?
That, that would be fine unless there's going to be some more discussion by any members of the, of the council on that item. In which case you should take it separately and Councilmember Bybee should then recuse herself and leave the room.
So fair, if I could say this, from what I've just heard, there's certainly not a majority to kill it. So can we leave it at that and then as we need to address it another time when Councilmember By, or Vice Mayor Bybee recuses, that makes sense? Because we don't need to go into more detail. If we're, there's certainly not three that want to say, don't do it, so it's status quo. Can we leave it at that and not?
If that is in fact the case.
I think I just heard, I just heard at least two, so.
That's, and, and that's why, yeah.
My apologies for interrupting.
No, no, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah. But, but that was all, not, nothing more on that. I, I did want to bring back up whether there, there'd be appetite for, for doing something with grants. Now, being completely open-minded, that, that's not necessarily me saying a new person. It may be part of someone's duties, it it may be allocated differently. And I want staff to come back with their recommendation for the best way to do that with our resources. But I I did want to just kind of do a quick poll of the council to see if there is interest in that.
If if it's appropriate, I'm I'm taking notes, so we'll circle back on the questions for the group if.
That would help. Thank you, thank you. Councilwoman Landry. Final or closing comments and then we'll let's or till staff speaks.
Um, I just want to really thank staff. We tend to sit up here and pick apart everything you guys ever put together, so. Uh, it's in constructive criticism, but you guys have do a tremendous amount of work and a lot of number crunching and. Most numbers go right over my head, give me a set of plans, I can look at them, look at spreadsheets, that's Paul's thing. But no, I do appreciate what everybody has said. Regarding a grant specific person, I don't know that we need that. We do a lot of. Grant writing in public works and I'd rather look at some of these other positions that we're talking about here than adding a specific person. And if it's not a specific person, I would look to staff to come back and say. Yeah, let's regroup all these activities to this person or something, but I don't support a new person. And I think my biggest concern right now is sustainability and open space. And the more we can project ahead, utilities are going up. Supply of water is going down, gas is going to change, that we be very proactive and. Looking at all these money that we spend now on anything gas related.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Sorry, can I make a quick clarifying comment? Just to be clear, and I I know Brian, you're going to come back with this. I'm not saying. A new person for grants, I'm saying I'd like staff to come back. What the recommendations are strategy for for doing that, and if there's something different that needs to be done. I I would like consideration on that, but but that that's all just a.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibbons.
Thank you. I appreciate Councilwoman Landry's bringing up sustainability as one of our key priorities. It really, really is important. And if staff can take a look at all of the projects with that lens, that's a new lens that we're really focusing on. And I think it's important and Councilmember Lopez just sat on his first meeting with the Bachmed. And I'll let him tell you what the legislation that they're proposing is coming forward. I wanted to say that I do believe the city has an E A P program for all staff. And if it does have a mental health component to it. And if we need to have staff re reinvent or re renegotiate the scope of the E A P program to more emphasize mental health. I think that would be a productive approach as opposed to. Yet adding yet another staff, a person or a staff responsibility. I think that H R role makes a lot of sense. And I'm looking forward to having the succession plan discussion so that we really can understand the staffing needs of each department. It's it, we can't do it without that backup. Knowledge. And then finally, we haven't talked about doing a ballot measure in November for such things as T O T. I don't know if we want to consider that or not, but I just wanted, it was a loose end that I wanted to to put out there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bybee.
I just wanted to add one more comment about the personnel request and. When the information comes back to council, that staff look at possible other alternatives rather than permanent staff. In the way of either a limited term position or a contract position so that there there is some. A measure of how much, what the position would do and and what. The productivity that it would, the the workflow. For future consideration.
Okay, thank you. No other comments. So if we could, if Brian, if staff could kind of recap and if there's questions about what's a. What's the change in priorities or what's something new or what status quo, this would be a good time.
You, uh, give me just a moment as I turn back in my notes here. Okay, and these are just my notes, so if I miss something. Will our finance director can jump in or prompt me if if I miss something on the. That the council heard.
Could you go closer to the mic?
I'm sorry, yes, trying to have longer arms so I could read this with without my reading glasses here. There there was a request that staff issue a memo on property tax revenue as it relates to low market rate housing. We do have a summary of that. We've provided to one council member. I'm assuming there's interest from the the whole council in getting that additional detail. But I was just assumption, I didn't hear anyone else speak on.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think the request for information or more information to council is is a major change on anything. I would say that's a, that's fine, but.
I I think that one was easy. The prune yard creek, I heard some difference in opinions on whether or not we should delay that or push that forward. I'd be interested in the council's feedback on that as a whole.
Okay, so let's let's just, let's just pull it very quickly and.
Delay. I I'd kind of like to ask staff that they, is it worth delaying, Todd, or? To me, is it's it's access to the creek trail. A pedestrian access, is that correct? And will the new development have an impact on? That project going forward?
Well, it certainly would improve access to the creek trail from the prune yard area, and it's not currently proposed to be on private property at all. So it's at this point, it would be a conversation with with Caltrans to see if it's a viable project. I I think if the, you know, in my opinion, I think having housing there on that site would only enhance the need for. Up up for that segment, we're not talking about a long, we're talking something in the range of seven to eight hundred feet. There's already a spur connection on the north end of the prune yard, kind of where the parking structure is. And this would simply extend that spur out to Campbell Avenue. So it's quite possible that in in negotiations with Caltrans. That we may find that there's a need to defer this anyway, because those of us that have worked with Caltrans. Often experience that. So I would like us to at least be able to move forward with the preliminary work. And then maybe we can come back to council on a decision point about whether we should move in into design or construction at a future date.
And when is it again, programmed into the?
I believe we're programming it in fiscal year twenty-three? Yes.
So we will have an opportunity in twenty F Y twenty-three C I P to say defer or. To move it out of the year or?
Yes.
So I I would leave it where where it is.
Councilwoman Lopez?
Yeah, I don't support changing it.
I support waiting till we figure out with housing because if Caltrans says no. We want potentially wanted, it is an important connection. So if Caltrans says no or it's not workable in the next ten years. Then maybe it does go on the private property. So that's why I'm not saying let's move forward, maybe have the conversation now. But the project to me, we want to see what's going on with housing.
Okay, I leave it as it is. I think that's status quo at least for now. Is that correct?
That's a as I understand it, so. Uh, we had another question about the parking guidance system. Uh, and the priority of that, the parking garages. Related to our parking garages, whether that should be a higher priority. Or not.
Right now, could you tell us, remind us where it is in the in the budget?
Thank you, Todd, as well.
It's in fiscal year twenty-four. Just getting your extra steps.
I am, I'm doing whatever it takes.
Fiscal twenty-four is the question, the question is, Brian, moving it up or the question is?
Yeah, should it be a higher priority?
In my comment, I I would have strongly supported the parking study earlier on. But it's too late for that now because no parking study will be accurate while this this building is under construction for two years. So it's just going to delay it without information and we need something. So I'm supportive of accelerating it.
No, if anything, I would move it down, but at least keep it where it is.
Can I abstain, Paul?
No, you know the rule, no.
You didn't tell him that the other night. I'm on the fence on that one. I agree with Liz that study isn't going to be accurate with the. Things under construction for two years. I do see a need, but I was hoping we'd have the parking study, so I'm kind of on the fence.
Well, then that's not, that that is not, do not accelerate it.
Do not accelerate, I guess, then.
Okay, and I think that's three to do not accelerate. I I, this is a tough one, it really is, and I leave it at where it is, but and that and that almost delays it, so. But the but the reality is we have a majority to to leave it where it is or 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 allow it to be delayed.
It's funded. It's funded.
I thi- I think three, three people have spoken. That's the way it goes.
Okay, moving on to Harrison Avenue intersection that Director Capurso was speaking at. We don't have funding identified for construction. We're looking at design costs. There was a question whether or not. We should use ARPA funding to fund that improvement. Harrison.
And to do this concurrently with Measure O, is that the point?
Um, I, well, one is there's no funding now, so it identified funding, I presume that would be to get the project done quicker as part of that comment, too.
I think it makes fiscal sense to do it with the library project. And and I think we need to have it funded, so I think we have to use our funds for it, but it it makes sense. I don't think it's the end of the world not to do it, but I think it's prudent financially to do it concurrent. Is that an appropriate use for ARPA funds?
It could be, but I mean, we also would need to. Get determined that we've enough for the Harper funds.
And without that also mean that you would need to readjust the C I P project list?
Yes, it does, and it it raises some questions for things that I've heard various statements about. I'm not sure that it would be physically possible for us to accelerate that project. To make it catch up to the library, given the fact that the library will likely be bid this summer. With a September start date, we're 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 in the process of hiring a design consultant right now. So we will not likely be able to do that work while the library is under construction.
Yeah, yeah.
I would go on the recommendation of of the Public Works Director and and not accelerate it.
Okay.
I I I see the benefit to trying to coordinate, but I I also defer to staff judgment on this.
I don't want to see us tear a whole bunch of stuff out, close everything down, and three weeks later we close it down. We open it up and close it back down again. So. The building's probably going to take longer to build than it would to then build the inner or design and build the intersection. So I guess where I'm at is try to see how much could fit together. And then next year, because it's out in twenty-four anyways, right? Harrison is in twenty-four. Twenty-five.
Harrison is not in the budget for construction. We have the design money in the budget where we've already, we've obtained funding from O BAG. Together with some city money to move into the design phase. Our plan was to apply for external funding. When whenever the next round is is appropriate, it's unclear whether we would be prepared for the next round as it comes up this summer. That's where the use of additional city money might be beneficial. Because if we find that we have no other alternative to bring in outside funding, or maybe we need a healthy. Local match, as we've discussed earlier, that may be a good opportunity to to look at adding some one time money to this project. But as of right now, I I'm not confident that we could accelerate that to match the library timeframe.
Okay, so I heard what you said. Do everything you can, once you get the design going, to see if there is a way to coordinate or overlap the two of them. And then that next year, it could be potentially a project in mid-year budget or whatever. But so do what we can to try to coordinate the two together, so we're not closing, opening and then closing the intersection again.
So I'll make it easier. I I, based on what you've said, I don't support accelerating it. I think it's status quo.
Yep. I got that. Thank you for that. The next question is regarding Ainsley Garden. And whether or not we fund the grass conversion to pavers as part of any future Ainsley. Building renovation project.
I would, may I clarify, I think it fits into what we were talking about sustainability, getting rid of turf. All at the community center and elsewhere. I think it's it's all one big picture of. Consolidating our sustainability and our water use and doing it. As part of of a project while the building is shut down just was making sense. So it's it's not specifically tied to quote unquote. Ainsley other work, it's just being prudent with our timing and overall goal of sustainability.
And I'd follow up on that.
I would say I'm not sure that needs a a vote. I think that's just a, just a power, a a direction kind of, just just we should be looking at those things. But I don't think, I don't, I didn't take it that there was a specific project that we were voting on. Okay. Which I, which I think the city has been doing with, if you look at the the areas, the the curb areas around City Hall and some of the parking spaces. The 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 ones by P D that remove, I think that's been going on. So I think. I think that was just a continuation of the same.
I would add to that, though, is it could increase our revenues of being able to expand the size of weddings or more frequent. So that's something if you, it is on the project list, it's just not right now a high priority. And again, magnitude of scale, closing the building, opening, closing again to fix the lawn. So sustainability, revenue generation and coordination of projects.
Right, if I, let me just suggest, I guess sustainability is a separate issue. We put that into our general plan as a priority. But if we talk about that, this specific project and what it does to revenue and all that, then staff should come back at some point and tell us if that's even what they want. If that impacts the use of the property and and allows poor people to the property. I don't know if that's a positive or negative, so I don't think we know enough on the Ainsley House itself to even discuss it today. But if staff thinks that's a good idea, it should come back as an agenda. Oh, no, I under- I understand, but I'm saying when we start talking about revenue and I I I don't know if it's a good thing or not, and we just, we we need staff to 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 propose something.
All right, I I'm not sure if there was a question in here for the group, but I had a note regarding using ARPA funds. For additional ADA ramp improvements or sidewalk improvements, we. I I think that was thrown out there and I wasn't sure if that was a question for the group, but I did note that, so.
I think the mayor was talking about ADA.
That was a comment, I think, that earlier you said, just of of there's an example, but I don't think we, I I certainly didn't make a proposal for that.
Okay, you you did say that there were a lot of ADA projects.
Right, I think it said that there were eight, there were a bunch of ADA projects that were a bit confusing and I'm and I'm saying I defer to staff to come back and say, what can we do in what order? And what's, what needs to be done? Certain things may legally need to be done before others. Certain things, maybe this would be a benefit for others. I I don't know.
Okay, more of a prioritization.
I'm not presupposing that that we know more than staff on this one.
I appreciate that clarity. There was a comment about looking, or at least having a discussion about purse pay down. I heard that from a couple, I sensed there was consensus, but I probably only heard it from two, so I had that on my list to confirm too. Not a commitment to pay down, but a commitment to have the analysis on.
Didn't we already, didn't we already have that discussion a while back to just to analyze? I mean, there's, there's a lot of components to that, right?
Yes, my, I remember us discussing the analysis of paying it down.
I think we asked for analysis a while back, so so that.
And I I apologize for cutting you out. The Finance Director just just. Leaned over my shoulder and told me that is in their work plan for this year, so we.
For the analysis.
Yeah, for the analysis, so I think.
I think that was what we were.
So a clarification, man. So the question, what I I was asking the question is having the budget moved forward. Are we, I I thought we we had had a lot of discussions over the last few years. And my question is, in this twenty twenty-three budget. Will that include a decision by council to to reduce the per, to pay down the purse? That was my question.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't believe that we're quite there yet. I you, I mean, you you certainly, you you certainly could choose to. I use the a purse, the purse reserve account to. Tip, to pay, to pay, to pay down first. I would, I I I I recommend that you hold off on that right now.
Um, I think, um, I think there are a couple of different ways to address a purse. Um, I I would like to come back to a council in the, in the, in the fall to, to, to go through a couple, uh, potential uh, choices. Um, so that would be.
That's your recommendation. I will just simply say, in eight years, we've gone over this, and gone over this, and gone over this. And um, it, um, I've been reading a lot about it in the last three months, and the recommendations are to pay it down. So I'm just, uh, I'm frustrated that for eight years, we haven't made a good decision on this. We keep saying we need more information, we need more information. It's time to get off the pot.
Uh, all right, I appreciate that. I definitely understand that perspective. Um, there was a question, um, or at least a comment about consideration of uh, grant coordinator or alternatives. Um, I don't know that was suggested that we necessarily need a grant um, writer. Um, but that concept or or an alternative, how we can um, either through existing staff or other resources.
I think the question was clarified, or the statement was clarified, to not ask for a person, is that correct?
Uh, I I would want staff's recommendation on how to proceed, not to decide up here for them tonight on on the right way.
I mean, you're already doing grants, so maybe this is just the best practice of if you think there needs to be changes. I I don't think it requires a vote.
If I may?
Yeah.
So the the staff, particularly Public Works, has been very successful at getting grants. It has to do with the world of uh, MTC primarily grants. Um, there are many other grants out there. There are grants from Congresswoman Issue, and there are grants from Supervisor Ellenberg and different kinds of things that I don't know about, that I would like to know when I send something in that staff has actually looked at it and said, yes, we can uh, submit, and we did submit. I feel that void. But um, to me, the simplest solution is to just list all the grants that we're going after and the results. I know PD does a ton of grants we don't have a clue about. So how you break up the work between departments who would have the expertise, I think it's tough. Um, I'd like to track all the grants, know what we're actually doing and being successful about, but to me, that's just a clerical track, track record.
Uh, so I'll I'll just say quickly, I I don't disagree with that. I do think there are many opportunities in housing that we are missing. And uh, I I don't fault our department for that, so I I just like some kind of strategy.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate that clarity, and I'm looking through the other notes that I had as questions, but we've already previously addressed them. I think that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. So I think you got, so you got all the input that you need. There doesn't require a motion tonight. Um, thank you, everyone. I think that was good discussion.